Okay, I'm going to call the regular city council meeting, this is December twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, your order. I ask you all to stand for the. Hi, it's me, Leo, please.
I'm glad that you're here. Okay, you have the students. And to follow the state of this nation. We need this all, we're being just.
I'm gonna, please call the.
Alda, here. Griffin, here. Hubbard, here. Michelle.
President.
Schlaf, here. Sundberg, here. Here. We're doing. Heating, here.
Okay, you see where we're going. Two more minutes. I'm really, I'm gonna switch that way. Okay, I would see there's approval of the meeting minutes. We have a work session from September eleventh, and there are three council meetings in September eleventh, both being active. We can handle them individually or all at the same time?
Oh, we're both on that minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mike, my drifting, sir. That's my son, girl. Thank you. Amy.
I'm huge aid of the regular meeting minutes. I would like to add it to my council comments. So I did email address and encourage you guys to contact.
Yeah. Um, I, the only thing I was worried about was if the updates that you're met in email on something that's been included or not. Now, if it's okay, I would appreciate it if we could, um, just note the idea that a conservation agent could be used um relative to the work session we talked about. The concept plan is too vague and does not offer any guarantees regarding the developments of the whole land. I had a comment that a concentrated use could be one way of keeping it intact to that. I'm only here, but some reference of conservation is within a minute. If that's a day maybe ago, yes. Any other council coming? Or please call up to approve the meeting minutes if that one edition.
Alda, yeah. Michelle.
Yes.
Griffin, yeah. Sundberg.
Yes.
Schlaf.
Yeah.
Hubbard, yeah. Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Down to free range participation, and I believe we have Jennifer Altad from Ann Arbor Spark here.
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here for my annual check-in. We all should have gotten a reports that we sent uh the city back in the summer, but I'm from Ann Arbor Spark with an economics development organization in Washington County. So we cover the entire county, and we just wanted to thank Dexter for being a partner in economic development. You give us two thousand dollars a year to sort of assist staff as needed. We're sort of on all the demographic data, real estate data, labor force data. Um, this year, for example, we wrote a support letter to um for a grant program for common sale development to the M E B C. Um, we helped get interns for a couple of your companies and we do outreach um to your businesses. But we're, you know, regional, and you're a very important player in the regional economic development. Michelle is never shy to bring up comments. We had a legislative forum. That's one avenue that you participate in. Um, you sit on our public sector committee where we convene our different public sectors throughout Washington County. This year, we had a legislative summit. Um, and other things that you do, again, access to real estate demographic data, our events, and I think, Michelle, we're talking about doing, we haven't done one in a while, a business summit. So I'm just here to thank you. You give us two thousand dollars a year um and answer any questions if you have them.
That's good for Jen. Yeah, short report right this time, yeah.
I'm not offended. I knew you was talking to you. How do you?
All good. Maybe we have a short meeting.
Maybe.
Thank you. I think we're good, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you.
There. Okay, item E is not arranged for this mission. Yeah, if you would like to speak this evening, please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Chad, you know, I live at seven five five zero four, thank you. Some of you, perhaps all getting all who I am. And they also, they also sit on the planning commission, as many of you know. Um, and I, I actually kind of hesitate to be here since I do sit on the planning commission. And I wouldn't want anyone to think that because I sit on a planning commission, but the reason I'm here, the reason I'm here is that if a citizen that has become more familiar with the temporary fire station situation because of that. And the question I raised at the last meeting was, why were we lonely looking at three locations? Very tight, very awkward, very difficult to build a temporary fire station. In my, I'm guessing, money. Number, maybe number one. Number two, politics. But there are so many sites in the city that I know, that everybody knows, where you could do this quite easily, enough room. Uh, that's gonna be more expensive probably because every one of the other sites, every one of the sites have things going for them in regards to things already in place. Um, and I'm not gonna go through um other sites that I see. You're all aware of. The previous, well, maybe I will. The site that was uh out there across the Mill Creek, why don't we, why couldn't the temporary site go there? They um maybe even three oh four five lot, that pavement there, right close to town. And I said I wouldn't do that, but I didn't do that. I could probably do that. Um, a couple of things I heard, which I was, oh, pretty strange. Two fire trucks are gonna be right over here, two, one underground. But no, um, what I'm, what I'm basically saying is please don't let politics and money power your decision. Um, don't let them override what I see as common sense. Um, and right now, I do, I'm guessing that's what's happening here. Um, maybe think about the other alternatives when you uh when you consider this temporary coordination. So, thank you for hearing me out. I can say, I did hesitate about showing up as a planning commissioner to you there. But the, the overriding thing was, uh, seems like there's other locations that have been, could have been cleared for us. Um, in addition to the Australia. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak this evening? Yes, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Portwood. This is Catherine, and I live at three one eight High Baker Road. Um, I live there, and then my business is right next door at three one seven three Baker Road. I own a, you know, the studio there. And um what came about as just a concern and the question about the noise level for the air brakes at an event that I met a lot in um tsunami there as well, um became hopefully bigger because something, I've been living here for about six years, and it's definitely a concern for me as well as actually my friend who was on that, he was right there, uh, Gail Hammond, and then some other people. Um, I think that, that we've sent you all some statements there. And so um I am just coming as a concerned resident and business owner with the noise level that these um air brakes, otherwise known as engine compression brakes, are causing to our clean city. And I know that I'm not alone in my concern, and a lot of other neighbors along the track route have expressed concern, and so I decided, let's try, let's try to do something about this. So I just wanted to give you a picture. Yesterday, on Sunday, I heard that it wakes about three times, and actually, as I was writing this, I heard it a couple of times. I was like, oh, four times. So that's actually on the lower side of the, of the typical day. Um, I've heard them in the middle of the night. Uh, it definitely wakes me up. I have three children. Um, and I'm not sure if it wakes them as many various moments later, but it definitely wakes, wakes me up. And then in the very early mornings, um, so on a typical day, I can hear them six to eight times, and they simply don't wake you up for a couple of seconds. They can lose them for a whole block or two. Um, I was walking up Forest from Leighton to Baker, and the truck started way beyond Forest and continued going home. And we didn't find them to leave this for out there. And as I understand, these are brakes that assist to prolong the brake pads as high speeds are going down hills. Um, and so somebody creeping slowly along towards the Baker from being traffic. Um, the traffic circles there, they also need some convenient, so I don't know if this can become ordinance, but it would definitely affect those numerous to along there. Um, and it's my hope that, that these truckers can have a look at the consideration for that town. Uh, just traveling around, I've definitely seen signs up on the roads that say, you know, trucks was, don't use, sometimes they're called take breaks or air brakes. Um, so it's my hope that this can make our town even more peaceful. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for your comments. We're going in there. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in an arrange? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on an arrange? Please use the raise hand, do you hear? No? See, the. Okay, thanks, Josh. Okay, are there any content we'd like to declare? If none, we will go to item G to rule the agenda.
I would approve this agenda presented.
Bye, Alda. Thank you. Awesome. And Flashlight, thank you. Any discussion?
How about the two K five, please? To, to become.
Okay.
Maybe a bit of a, and.
Okay, I'll go down five. You have a chance? Okay, we just all, oh, sorry, uh, with, with the, at the end of the, at the end of the, in the, in the audience, do you do on the? I'm okay with that. We'll make it on one.
That's fine.
Okay. This is Jack. Thank you. Good job, sir. We move the, impact that one. The question the guys? Don't you please call up to rule the agenda.
Sundberg?
Yeah.
Block.
Yeah.
Koshals?
Yeah.
Alda?
Yeah.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Here.
Yes. And who motion carries? We have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to communications. We have one communication in the back, which is our reading calendar for the next couple of weeks, if we have any comments in the meeting calendar. Enough. Down to the report, and Jay one. The first report tonight is from our board of directors and superintendent. Welcome, Tim.
Good evening. I'm really good.
Really good, you?
Good, thanks. So you have a two-week report. Do you have any questions?
Is it possible to get, so you have the radar sign on in our street? When is the time to get the data? I don't know. How much longer is playing? I don't know if that was on now.
Yeah, it should have been. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's about half a week after.
I've seen it on at some point. I'm just saying this evening. I don't know if it's turning off again. Can I, Josh, is it you who I work with to get?
The data?
Yeah.
So we'll, 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 if, if, that's just like, we'll, we'll share the information council.
I would like to see that. Do I need to change motion?
No.
Thank you.
Where are we on the street? We're listening, so I'm.
Where about, are you, it's the.
I just want to see the data. It's currently on Ann Arbor Street by like Dover.
Okay.
It's up from Dover. I'm just, we were doing it where it wasn't turned on, and then it is turned on. I'm curious, be here to see the data whenever.
All good. Thank you. Well?
Thanks about that. Um, I mean, I, I also want to see the data, but I would like us to look at it um not so strictly as just the numbers associated with that sign and, you know, the way that we have other times coupled with one of those sites. Because I also noticed in conjunction with that, a bunch of regulators put up additional signs to say slow down, which I honestly think may have had a greater effect than the radar sign itself. So I just want to make sure that when we're looking at that data, we take that into consideration as well, and don't just look at the numbers and treat them as, you know, as black and white.
All right, well, here's, I said one thing, um, they came out on Saturday, it's like the punches today, and they did ditch back, so it was the easiest, quickest space for uh the water, I liked it. Um, we're gonna keep running, make sure that's, that took care of everything. Hopefully it did. I'm gonna have to come back and put some grassy down, incidentally, did, I don't need yourself. But uh, it's pretty much forever.
Yeah. Did we get all the striping done in the line? I don't know if they were in all of it.
They were, they're all last year.
It's a job.
Yeah, it turned out really well, I like.
Any questions for Jen? There.
Why does the dry locks, they have a drive up?
So they, they, they just poured the concrete. I don't know if you're in the, the state one. Yeah, they, they did blow concrete, so they did that.
Thursday.
Was, was here Thursday, and so probably middle of this week, I should be geared up. We're okay.
Okay.
The other, unfortunately, two people are off today. They'll be able to sat here, they'll sit there. Imagine Wednesday, Thursday.
Maybe, maybe I missed this. There's an excavator and a, what is it, a mini mill? Over on the eighty-one eighty, crossing, crossing the river. They don't know what that's for. They'll come and come back.
Didn't say you'll need.
Yeah, you'll, you'll, it's sports.
I didn't see.
Which has been our last couple of days over the ball. That's funny.
Last year, like, for flash, you know, back in the can.
Yeah, it's been going on nonstop.
They're over the farm.
There's no barrels or anything, so.
Yeah, I, I think the, the county's done, uh, brand, yeah.
I have read it in a lot of, I don't remember.
Why you make the most of all, too, so.
Just here. Okay, well, thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Next up is our community development manager. Hi, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. How's council this evening?
Good.
Good. Excellent. Students? All right, okay, good. All right, you've got my report in front of you before I go into updates. Excuse me, please let me know if you have any questions. Okay.
Actually, I need to call out, and you're gentle update, the, the twenty-eighth in the packet, you're asking for a work session in a, in a, more about the Benedict Brownfield Act. I'm fine with that. I don't know why they take her down.
Uh, well, with Justin, um, whether it would be the, well, I know it won't be the first meeting in October. I will be in New York in the sitting. Uh, so maybe the second meeting or even the first meeting in November, um, whatever you feel most comfortable with.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to throw that out there for any, any objections to that, giving point of section comment.
Is that a part of the meeting?
Yes.
I would prefer to go.
Okay.
Good one, Jen.
If the, if, well, if that's the consensus, then I have no doubt, no problem with that in depth. It's something I can work with Justin. Michelle, the material is ready. Okay, um, you've been waiting for a very long time, um, the property maintenance code and rental inspection ordinance. Um, uh, we've done the comparison between the general code and the twenty-twenty-one international property maintenance, um, drafted amendments, um, the, uh, the thing that, that uh staff was able to do that helps sort of really calm down the hill in this time was that, that comparison between existing code and property maintenance and understanding whether the property maintenance is really important, um, what, what things should be tweaked. Uh, the fortunate thing for us is that a government manager, uh, they did a property maintenance code rental inspection, um, twenty twenty, I believe, plus. And the city of Saleen just had one done. Um, they did both the, the uh property maintenance code, and they called it a rental certification. Um, so whether we choose to do something like As far as the name or a rental inspection permit, I mean, we can talk about those things. But right now, they are drafted, they're rough, um, uncomfortable with the language, provided them to Justin. But before we start to formally rule this out with the public hearings and all, um, I, I really think we need to think about how we are going to engage landlords. Um, because I don't, I think you would agree with me, that just screening a new set of regulations and codes, um, may not sit real well, so um, I'm going to, again, utilize some of the, um, uh, the methods that Saleen did when they rolled their time and see if there's something to be believed in, how they did it, and, you know, get someone to start with that, but it's, um, if you've got any suggestions, please let me know, but email me. Bring me up, I'm happy to talk about it. Um.
I know, I mean, I do remember being, Saleen had a town hall, specifically, I mean, I would be supportive of something like that.
Okay. Um. We can tackle the supplements if you'd like, if you've got the questions, um, uh, the Mill Creek flats letter did not get in the packet, and that's my bad. I forgot to incorporate it. Well, actually, I think I incorporated the wrong things that I gave to Justin, so. Um, uh, the other thing, um, we'll start with the E U D amendment for the temporary fire station, um, planning commission was on it. Um, they felt that it was a new complete site plan, and that we, as a city, we're not following our own processes. Um, we would never accept this from the private developer. So, um, they also questioned why staff did not have the project reviewed by C W A and O H M, and again, they felt that was a deviation from um standard procedure, and we would not accept that in any other case. So uh, at this stage, the conceptual E U D, E U V amendment, um, with, uh, let me step back. As staff read and interpreted the ordinance, um, it says that any amendment has to go through the original public hearing, uh, et cetera. I, when I took the word original, I took it in a siloed fashion, so this was an amendment to a final site plan. So it would follow the approval process for that final site plan. Um, uh, the city attorney did look at the information, and from a conservative standpoint, he said perhaps we should just start with the conceptual, um, and take it through its process. So the E U D amendment would second you, which is no action, is comments, to recall, from the planning commission and then city council. Um, uh, following that would be preliminary and then final. However, you can combine preliminary and final site plan, and so that's what we would consider for this. Um, excuse me, the, um, um, short of doing, seeing, planning commission would be open to a special meeting, um, scheduled in October. Um, the, the conceptual review would be scheduled for their November meeting. Um, we can turn those around rather quickly, which means you, you get it for second meeting in November. Um, by the time that is done, um, um, that should give staff, um, the architect the time he needs to get a full site plan together, uh, for all the applicable standards that need to be, there's standards of information that need to be provided, excuse me. And then that would be under December, uh, planning commission's December agenda, public hearing, hopefully recommendation uh to council, and then council will act if it's first meeting in December. It does push things back a little bit, but I, I'm going to turn this one around. Any questions?
So, you're thinking it could be on the planning commission agenda, it's going to be in October, but most likely, not November.
If we could, if I can give a special meeting with that for them, if I can, over, then they can have a date that they can, oh, or majority can attend it, we could do a special meeting. Um, I don't believe, I don't, Grace is online. I don't believe we have a, uh, C D A meeting in November, and that would be the most opportune day. It's the third Monday of the month.
Okay.
So, uh, if that's what council would like, we'll ask them.
Well, the planning commission is right on all those things, so let's get it, our center all good, as long as we can get it to appropriate company.
Appreciate that. Um, the next thing is the responses to some question, um, councilman, uh, council, I'm sorry, councilperson Griffin, um, asked some questions um regarding the packet, uh, regarding the D E A letter. Those are provided here, um, uh, regarding the letter, and I can either go over those now, or we can wait until that item comes up, it's up to you. Um, and I say that to go on with the same thing with the Baker mode, Baker road, Baker road, all things, uh, see, I'd be, some cases, it's whatever.
I'm waiting until the respective agenda. Okay. Unless there are any questions, I think, good enough.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Appreciate the work. We are down on the agenda to the one that I share for work. And they haven't found out the question. Enough, keep moving. I said that I hope it's over to page three of the agenda, unless somebody's got a, or which report, but we don't, we don't do our update. Definitely, we'll be like, see manager.
Yeah, so, um, I don't have a lot of updates outside of, um, what's in my report. Um, but I do want to call out, um, the, uh, item D movement, uh, which is, um, we've offered a promotion to Eric Kirkman um to the position of the utility's foreman. Um, Eric's been doing a great job for us, and we, we really appreciate his efforts. Um, that's going to put him in a position to be, um, responsible for both water and sewer, and supervising, um, all of the mutual employees that, 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 maybe not you, but, uh, water, with wire. Um, and, um, it was, uh, a good for him, and we really appreciate it. Uh, does anybody have any questions on any of the other items, or anybody who's in general?
Well, um, I just like to say, yeah, being wrapped Eric, every time he's come up to my house, tell you anything, he's been very thorough and very professional, and it's good to hear who's sticking with it.
Amy.
Yeah, I have a couple of things from our recent parks meeting that I just wanted to say verbally, so I get some. It's a good battery for it. I just thought I'd put it in here.
That's okay.
So, a resident mentioned, uh, that his property was used as part of a plan air, and it's an artist who using the property, had a ask for permission in advance, and so we, Josh, I can clarify, and now they are supposed to ask residents for permission to access the property, but just so everybody with a way where that maybe not all authorities were doing that, or where were that they needed to do that. Then we had something that's come up a number of times in parks, and I think probably even in the time Justin and you were, uh, the liaison for that. Dwayne Wagner, I don't know if anybody is aware about her personal efforts to clean up the river at the point of rushing the party store, and this has been her own personal labor of love, I don't know, since two thousand and sixteen, and I think she's been in touch, uh, with Justin a couple of times on this. She's I don't know if she now reaches out to you or monitor council. I guess all this to say that, given the number of times it's come to us at the park. And understanding that there was this issue, I mean, I think what you brought last time was interesting. So technically, my understanding, this is part of Metro Park property. But they've said, no, that's not the launch point, so maybe they're thinking we should have something to do with that. And if anyone's holding or everything incorrectly, let me know. I think one of the last things she was out there picking up the trash. A Metro Parks trash truck is probably coming saying, well, one of the Metro Parks east, and it's coming this way, and I actually drive by that site. But doesn't pick up it. So, just in our informal conversation, a couple of options are. Asking the Metro Parks if they don't want to take responsibility for their property, then they need to actively shut it down, I guess. So the trash isn't accumulating, other people thought maybe you just let the trash accumulate, and it gets to be a bigger problem, and then some people do something about it. I think, I don't know if there is, I understand it's not the property. If there is some letter of support, the council could write their draft or staff or something to try to encourage action to happen. It sounds like her personal conversation, her one-on-one conversation happening, pre eviction. And I think it's, I'm trying to try and support it. That, that, I've spoken with her since the last meeting, and she's thought about that.
So, so we we have reached out to Metro Parks, um and specifically the Metro Parks supervisor for Hudson Mills. Um, and their response said, this isn't an official launch, and, you know, we, they they have not adhered to that. That they plan to do anything about it. Um but it is Metro Park property, it is in Webster County, Shatter. Um, and it it does make it difficult for us to do anything officially. Uh other than, we we have made uh dumpsters and trash stuff, but they're able to do a man. Uh for for reference. Um. I I mean, outside of reporting on Eagle or something kind of more severe. Um, I I I don't, it it has been a topic of conversation for a long time, and the Metro Parks haven't taken action to date. So I I don't know what we would have to do to get that to happen.
So, so why don't you show up and say something too?
Um, so the thing that we can um reach out to the town chair on is tackle the enforcement issue. It's all kind of bringing up the potential, and even though I think it's public domain, um instead of private domain. They are subject to the town chair's, while ordinance, it's something to be a common vote to improve. And it, that's my wrong, right, right, right? But you don't put it on. But that's one that, that's another.
That's fine, then. You're right down there. Has anybody, this isn't the best idea, but has anybody approached the party store across the street? That is hanging on hand in hand with.
Well, I can speak to that very, I can personally speak to that on very personal experience. Because I also pick up trash down there, and I've talked to Joanne countless times about this. Um, because we're both advocate and friends, right? Um. There was a period of time when that party store was under different ownership, where they weren't very receptive to that idea. And they would let us bring up trash to put in their dumpsters. It has since changed hands. I know they've been approached by, I believe, probably Joanne and and me to an extent. And that's no longer an option under the new ownership. But I do agree with you that it does go hand in hand, but it's not all of them, because people get help in there. They didn't have anything to do with that party store. Um, I also think short of like putting up a privacy fence, it could be really difficult to stop people from getting at it out there. I mean, it's been something that's been done for decades. Um, and it's, you know, I mean, it's sad, I it's, I I hate to see it. Every time I kayak, I take the trash bag with me, and I pick up trash. I mean, I don't understand what's wrong with people, but. You know, I I think the light enforcement thing is an interesting um approach to it. But yeah, I mean, outside of that, I'll continue to keep helping Joanne pick it up and. Hoping that people can stop acting like jerks.
On that note, if you and or Joanne feel comfortable or have the time to, before you do the cleanup, and take a photo. She does, she often does. And then in fact. I mean, I have, I have many, I mean, I think if, I don't know what, I mean, I think reaching out, I don't know if it's staff means to reach out to their co-person. If you want to reach out to their co-person. Um, so my understanding is that, you know, documentation is required, so any photos. Yeah, Joanne has a taking photo and wants her data. So I think that would be the next step that is getting the photo.
And speaking of working to learn, uh, to get the appropriate time.
Thanks, it just felt very, I guess. I wanted to bring to the next level, because it seemed like I was running away from it, so. I think that was all I had in that one.
Okay. Any questions? So, you got the Baker Road draft plan?
Yes, yeah, so um, but I mean, we probably have a whole couple of meetings there to see them again. Um, so I included a copy of the planning people in the packet.
I just wanted to ask. How are we thinking about our after flash and beat them on Baker Road and Forest?
Mark, I just, I don't fully, so.
Attack moved in the current plans now.
I mean, on every other, we've set a cross on every other crossing there. Yeah, I don't know, just don't think about, like, if it didn't, that's what it's anything. Five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand more. That.
Uh I'm curious, has anything of substance changed on these plans? There were a lot of gross things that we discussed previously.
Mark. Um. No, I don't think there were really any significant changes from the previous um. We presented the crosswalk at Forest as included on the plan, it was shifted, the line was shifted a little bit to. Um, save a part of space there. Um. I don't remember any other um major changes, though. But in other words, discussion about potentially uh putting the uh portion of the intersection coming into main back. I agreed, the running, we looked at that, but given the cross section and the asphalt mix designs, I would expect that. So it shouldn't be a problem when pulled up uh there, that's indicated on the plan for the left turn and utterance. Um, we didn't include, the bottom plan didn't include um. Uh softening the radius for right turns on the next grand hour. And moving hydrant further back, so what we included, even with the wider wider radius, drop where to still. You know, top of the curb and hydrant being well clear of that. Um, there was some discussion, I I think also about the signal itself, but that's actually beyond the limits of this project. Where this project is is stopping on the Baker, the the south side of the intersection. Um, and there's not funding in the in this project of private for a second order. Um, so we are continuing that discussion uh with Washington County as part of the C N A. You guys already have a specific question if you want.
Lanelets have not been reviewed?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I I know people are sick of this, but if you go look, the paint, the paint in front of. Parking parking in front of the post office is thirty nine feet, thirty nine feet across. That's thirteen feet per lane. Interstate highways, twelve feet across, you're going seventy or eighty, if you've got a German car, it may be eighty five. Downtown in our ten and a half feet wide lanes. Jerron Street and Ann Arbor, which forms ten and a half feet. We wonder why cars are going fast, we designed a road for them to go fast using state highway design standards. Actually, beyond state highway. Had a professor architect school in Michigan said, if you have to put a sign on your building to tell people where to go who failed in your design. There's a similar one going around urban design now, if you have to put a sign telling people to slow down, you failed in your street design. This, this will continue to encourage people to go fast, we can put a little sign that flings or waves or gives a frowny face. People will continue to go fast if we continue with this. I'm I'm sad that we've done, not done anything, and I would request that my name be stricken from the cover sheet, because I I don't endorse this design.
Because all I can say to that is that this project doesn't, it's not a really good start project, so we're not moving the curves. Um, so that is a constraint, the one thing that could be done. Um, to be to widen the center turn lane to have the travel lanes be narrower. Um, but if you end up with a, whatever that would come out to be a fifteen quarter more wide center turn, and that, that's a outward.
Or we could strike place lanes on your side too. Or if you don't decide.
Uh, that's what, that's what we have to have, I don't think there's suspicion with. Five bike lanes and the travel lane. A minimal, so we're, you can't go any less than eleven feet. Um, because of the federal funding, so here's a project, that bump one is actually directed with, so. You need to have a good reason to go less than twelve, so with the width being there, where the existing curves are. I don't know if I disagree with you, the original design could have been a narrower corridor, but um this project is a resurfaced, the now reconstructed, so. And with the funding, we have certain limitations um in order to use that money.
Yeah, and what is the, remind me what the federal is, the requirements of three fifty or something like that?
Yeah, they have, yeah, it was three fifty, three eighty, um.
Okay, that's good.
But then the the eighty twenty net, for for those eligible.
Yeah, John.
Still. When, when you say the requirement from the federal is. We said eleven.
Isn't it? Minimum, yes.
It, and that is based on where it's striped, or it's based on the actual sizing lengths?
It is based on the the striking. And and actually, Zach's point, a lot of that Ian Harper's doing, um and there. Which has led them to their desire to take ownership of a non-own road, so that they can go narrower than uh. President, that document about, you know, taking over Washington, for example, for a number of years. And that's only have added flexibility with the striking schemes that they that they do. But it's federal highway money, which is administered through the state D O Ts. Um, in their case, Michigan Department of Transportation, so I'm not really just kind of a gatekeeper to make sure that you're meeting federal standard. And it 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 is the standard that was developed by federal highway or highways, unfortunately, so.
There isn't a federal standard for non-highway roads?
Well, there is, but there's, but there's still wider than somewhat ways in my life. Which is eleven foot minimum, twelve foot preferred. And in order essentially to go lower than twelve, you have to show, you have to have a reason in the pavement, the width is there. Um, all that said, we can certainly take it back and see if it gets eleven foot ways. We're gonna have, just as long as everyone understands it's gonna resolve up pretty wide center turn lane, which um maybe that's not an issue for anyone.
It's, it's there because it's a better truck out. And we want, it's pushing, that that whole truck that to be filtered within a technical land.
Yeah, the other. And frankly.
Murder for error. And we're all over the funding because it's a truck.
And frankly, from a safety perspective, if it were, if there were parking, I wouldn't have an issue with that, but because there's parking. Widen the center turn lane, narrowing the drive lanes, you're pushing that passing vehicles closer, some people getting out of their cars. Um, so from that perspective, that would be a less desirable um situation.
That, uh, Mount Pleasant Mission Street uh is a US twenty seven or one twenty seven now. Business route, they had a similar issue where the lanes were incredibly wide. They, this is maybe fifteen years ago. It looks like it's a bike lane, but it's not a bike lane, because it's only three feet. What to do? Could we not have strip it, white solid striping inside of the parking and inside of the curb? Not put down the the bike little things, but.
I can look at that, yeah, that um, I don't know, I can. Yes or no to that question, but definitely talk to our track. Well, I see that's not.
In in Mount Pleasant was actually M dot that did that. I actually talked with city leadership about that, and they said M dot's never been a bike lane, the next year there was a city bike lane up there.
Okay, good.
Is there, I I guess it'd be good to know what options are worth, I mean, maybe it's not. Maybe smaller lanes, like council member Michelle said, a three foot lane. I mean, we talked about four, about having green lanes there, which I don't think in particular would. I mean, I don't think a bike lane needs to be green necessarily, but could we put a green stripe down either side that would. You know, not have a white line defining it, so that it would look like a bike lane and effectively narrow the, but not narrow the lane. Yeah, I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, can you find a creative way to get to something that might be, you know?
I understand, yeah, we can, I'll take that back and move it in on, or adjustments. The the nice thing about the striping is uh, we're working on, we're working on the final plans, I haven't been submitted yet. Um, the paint is relatively achieved, and that's something that can easily be worked out as we're wrapping up the third panel.
That, one more question on that. Uh, if federal money dictates how wide the lanes have to be, does it dictate how long until we refresh the paint and repaint it?
Um, no.
Okay. Thanks for sharing that, great. So what was the vote?
This will be uh either the January or February bid letting throughout that. We're for sure for January, but enough a little bit unpredictable, um, that would be exactly our strategy, uh, what if it's February?
Your final plans are your first one?
Yeah. Uh, we we want to get in now, the earliest bid letting after January.
Thanks, Brian. Anything else?
Um, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, I'll move down to my report. Um, I continue to. Work and try and find the focus of the honor citizen supervisor board. I have one consultant sitting in the audience, they do come off very. Um, when I have five, I will bring that to the board, if not more than that, because looking at seven, I'm not a five, so. Um. This Thursday, we have a, it's on my calendar, a meeting of Dexter High School students, or Lewis Clear, is that correct today, Terry? What is the format for that? Are we meeting just in this room?
So, uh, my thought, Michelle and Jac are, I mean, the day before, trying to figure out what um. What topics and then what I was in the book, but.
Okay, are there other house members that are planning to come to that, I'll finish that in there?
Okay.
Okay, I will be here as long as I can, but I have to take the one here, so, um. And I can see that.
Yeah, I just like it there.
Just, yeah, I'd be great. You know, we're, we're, so, I'll do it. Anything, much for me, I mean? Okay, let's um move on to the consent, oh wait, can you talk about my report in a second? Okay, uh, okay, is there a consent agenda that just has four items on it? Um, when we did, move the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to make you know myself about that meeting. Uh, but I moved here before I didn't respond with consent agenda, bills a payroll in the amount of five hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, hundred and seventy eight. And fifty eight cents, consideration of job employer of Central Street from Maine to Fifth for accolades. Consideration of appointment boards, like committees. And consideration of agreement for election services, quarterly voting administration.
Thank you, Oz, or Zach?
Excellent.
Thank you, Zan. Okay. Okay, dirty please follow up and move before I even have a consent agenda.
For him, sure. Yes, Alda, yes, Sunny Fair?
Yes.
Hubbard, yes, Michelle's?
No.
Yeah.
Yes, motion carries. Uh, we have one item of unfinished business, L one is consideration of the SIO Township Interact Committee goals and objectives. I mean, to postpone and not based on agenda until either one, we receive written notice from SIO Township that they oppose. Or the second condition would be to receive well information from the applicant. And the uh, conservation easement has reached its final conclusion, the SIO Township. Would you continue with that? The purchase of development rights, apologies. Then we'll, uh, send it by curtain. To postpone, thank you. That just, I don't want to write that stuff, and you give me the conditions of the.
Yep, uh, so either one is we receive written notice from SIO Township that the board has opposed the annexation. Or the second one would be, we receive well information from the applicant. And the purchase of development right has gone on its course through its final disposition, the application for P D R.
So either one or two entries, now, do you have?
Yep, that's the logic, Terry.
Okay. Okay, Zach. Then?
Michelle, go over what is and her update here, um. Instead of, that the township subcommittee informed us they were not supporting the annexation request. And would be requesting formal clarification. They're taking their, the. Relegation, for lack of a better word, to board and to anticipate that support from that be supported. And the people try to provide the regulation. And what we were hoping to do tonight was. Just pass a meeting minute on from our work session, what were we being asked to consider, I guess? Uh, I think what we had is a crossing, the subcommittee had the third meeting scheduled already with the town. Subcommittee, um, but at your last meeting, uh, the work session, um, the. You have the work session and then you have the meeting, was the decision that, um, Justin would collect all the comments. And that would be uh, brought back to you for, in order to provide direction to the subcommittee to talk of the township. We tried to incorporate, not incorporate minutes because they weren't accepted. But to talk about the things that were in the different packets that were in, um, uh. In your different packets, uh, and were in the workshop packet, um, as to what potentials to be. Um, clean, um, in the whole, that perhaps additional information could be provided. The, um. The SIO committee informed us that their L P C, their Land Preservation Commission, who is. Um, voted unanimously to uh, recommend that the township go after the entire. One hundred thirty seven acres, uh, instead of, um. Uh, accepting just a portion of that. So, um. That's when they also understand that. They will be supporting, yeah, exactly.
With a little bit of clarifying, though, but finally, I know things, because it it sounded a little bit, when I looked at it, it was also a little bit like. Uh, but in our last meeting, we wanted an opportunity for the council to provide more, um. Points or um, direct requests or such at this meeting, based on what would come out of our Friday meeting. But, so the the way that this is. Converged used for the, um, agenda was. Based on agenda going out before the Friday meeting and unknown, so they were trying to be as, and the staff were trying to be as. Inclusive as possible or whatever we would decide today, but the the, what came out of the Friday meeting. Really gave a direction by itself naturally, so that's why it feels a little bit like. Yeah, the the language of the agenda versus what it is is different, so that's that's. Why that is motion is also, um. The limit of the like of what was this stuff, right?
The one thing that, um, excuse me, that, um. Was something they they do want to pursue with us, we asked them if it would be helpful if the committee continued to meet. Um, to discuss, um. Opportunities where annexation could be supported, um, as opposed to just talking about. Annexations that wouldn't be supported, so although we're knowing having another meeting date at this strategic moment. They are willing to sit down and talk with us again.
So. Two weeks ago. We wanted to wait till we had our meeting minutes passed. In order to share them. And memo in the back of this aisle, is that, where, what years ago? This memo, we keep receiving, and talked about around the plan, all the boxes around it, we'll be seeing on Tuesday. I mean, it's been a long time, it's not like they can't see it.
Right, exactly.
I have to see it, I'm sure they like that.
Well, they were on the meeting.
Right, but so. And now that we've passed the meeting minutes, we can call it here. They're gonna be able to see that easy too, I mean, we're trying to, I'm just trying to get that written down, we have a document, right? And that, that was the goal of council at the last meeting, to share. Our thoughts on your plan, it was the one that now the audience had prepared, right? Do they agree that is the goal? So I guess we're, we've got, we, we don't, I mean, all that is public information that we're talking about here. Okay, and so that's really what the suggested motion was, at least compared by the. The memo, right, but. Doesn't matter, Derek. So instead, we have a motion to postpone. During that?
Not to postpone any further action on it, it's it's public record, we don't have to. Share public record, the state said we must.
I also can't understand the motion, so so do you want to postpone?
And further discussion on that at council.
And something here?
Not, so many can get every day, every month. But so the idea is that there are a couple of things that we needed to direction, that we should get, and based on Friday notes. SIO Township was gonna be doing a lot of stuff, or there's vehemently opposed of this, my reading, the tea leaves here is that we don't want to do anything that SIO Township isn't. Cheering for us to do, and that's not gonna happen, so. What are we doing, spending a bunch of time at this level on, for a minute?
And we, the committee hasn't known, Mr. Lott.
The committee hasn't, staff hasn't committed.
They're just a meeting that you have.
On Friday, yes.
On Friday.
That's a clarifying question, uh, because member of your side.
Yep.
You mentioned a P D R application for transfer of development rights, um. I don't know if the township or the city has that, well, is that something you're hoping that will work out as part of? Whatever future discussions we have with the township?
Uh, state of Michigan doesn't have a formalized traffic development right, enable legislation, so that couldn't really exist. Um, but the purchase of the development rights is how the Land Preservation Committee. They're very blind, they don't own it in pretitle, they own development rights.
Okay.
For fifty years. So the big field, the corner court hall, that is supposed to be annexed in the city. They own the, they pretend development rights over a fifty year.
Go in there's reservations, uh. Um, but I'll double check more, I was not aware of that, I appreciate you.
Mr. Lott, you take the time, tell me, were you, what what is your opinion of what's going on at the P D R? Could you clarify where you think that is?
Well, the, uh. SIO L P C is meeting this Thursday, and my understanding. I've talked with Mr. Ryder, the subcommittee for SIO, uh, that the motion. That passed was. Driven by the original application, which predates my annexation request by three thirty months. And though relative to that original application. They passed this motion saying, we'd love to acquire the whole property. They did that knowing that there's a purchase agreement between the many hands nonprofit. For eighty seven acres of the property, and knowing that we were pursuing this annexation. I spoke with Barry Lannick, and I was quite surprised when that motion passed the L P C. Uh, and uh, he informed me that at their next meeting, which is this coming Thursday. Uh, that he believed they would also be considering. And again, I thought I understood that the discussion that took place after this motion was passed. Uh, there was a staff meeting that called by the clerk, who's on the subcommittee, very carefully. Groups, but, uh, that they had discussed about the passage of this motion. And Lannick explained what I just said about the purchase agreement for eighty seven acres and the annexation request. And he said that they 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 instructed him to go back to the L P C. And Preservation Commission and give their opinion about the hundred and five acre proposal. Which is what I made to the L P C last April, um, saying ten days before I was here. Talking to the year group for the first time about the annexation. So I think Lannick's expectation is that they will have a motion to support the hundred and five acre acquisition. And as I said in a memo that I gave to to Michelle, that I believe the subcommittees have now both seen. A hundred and five acres includes. Virtually all of the woods, wetlands, military frontage, man, flood plain, land. That's within the total two hundred and thirty seven acres, uh, so in terms of preservation. All the good stuff is in the piece that we're offering. Uh, and his belief is that they will act on a motion, the L P C will act on a motion on that this coming Thursday.
And that would supersede the previous one?
Well, it might be a clarification, I don't wanna say that it supersedes anything, that they passed a motion unanimously. And I was told that it had nothing to do with opposing the annexation request, which isn't in front of. The L P C, though, they've been informed of it, it was, it was simply answering a question that somebody in SIO leadership. Had asked them to address, apparently, and so that motion passed, uh, as I said in my memo. Michelle, I was stunned when I heard that that passed, it seemed out of left field to me. Uh. We then provided for the subcommittees, the many hands, preliminary site plans, they've had their. Conceptual meeting with the township, uh, uh, leadership and. Members of the planning commission, under road commission and so forth, they've all come to the table and I'm told they had a very positive meeting. Uh, about the many hands, I kind of, that is coming to the SIO planning commission soon. Not sure exactly when, um, and, uh. The state of the L P C is gonna be asked to take a position on the hundred and five acre piece. Coming Thursday.
Have you read our graph minutes that we had in the packet from our work session last week?
I've read some.
Okay, one one of the items that was clearly brought out in the work session was that, um. We would want more confirmation, more confirmation on whether or not. A well is feasible on forty five acres, and I wonder whether, you know, we, everybody likes to say here, but nobody knows for certain whether there's water there. Have you? And I don't know. How the committee is communicating with you, so I'm gonna do it right here, um, do you? Have any ability to, or thoughts in in taking on a test well? Or trying to figure out if there is water that would give us some better idea of whether a well is feasible?
As I said in my memo to Michelle, we're working on it, uh. Uh, in the work section, you spoke to that issue, and I I heard you. Under my ownership, we have not done that kind of investigation, uh, but quickly did. To, uh, some test engine, and, uh, my engineer did not have copies of that, he would work, I have him. Thursday, and he is working quickly to find that and and report back, and he will be happy to do that. Uh, we we certainly are glad to hear that there's interest on the city's part for that, and we are willing. To consider that, uh, my memory of what I've been told. Is that there is a a good well site on that annexation piece, I don't have the paper.
You've initiated looking into that, Rob.
We are, yes, okay.
That's good, I appreciate that.
I'd like to clarify, and and actually, you have the, the, um, questions that. You have to hear about the setting, and that is the, um, the notes that you're giving me. Or part of the reason for, as a, um. It gets some clarity, because at your work session, it was clear, we needed more information. And so I had to put a lot of effort on specifics, um, uh, I think number two had to do with the preliminary site plan. That, um, you mentioned for many hands, and so I asked, there was a, an application that was submitted. And he, um, he he let me know that no, there wasn't, but they did have a conceptual, I think. Um, with the township manager, the township planner, and road commissions, he had this going, and, uh, or asked one. And that's what, that's what is in your supplement, that's what, that's what it was. Um, and this was shared with the, um, with both of the settlements. Also, um, asked him, as it pertains to the well, um, and to help. Get these important annexation to show that there's progress, I asked him to send you a technical work, uh. The soil warnings for, um, determining the capacity of the soil for building, um. He was not aware if that's been done, he did mention that Kribley's did testing, Kribley was doing the testing to determine if the soil was preferable with. The Latin say we almost doesn't for doesn't mean the good energy yield for each individual unit, but that's not what's being referred to.
Yeah, but I don't need to interrupt, but we don't know that Palatino's perfect, in fact. There are satisfactorys for that and the the entire many hands development will be on well set. Uh, so uh, it it simply was a case of what we wanted to do with the whole site. There weren't sufficient soils to do a wastewater treatment plant on site, uh, which is. The chief reason why I'm here asking for an annexation to continue residential development in that. In a very logical location.
Thank you, that's all, I didn't get it, that's the supplement, so.
Knowing what we have all um, desire for this transformation in terms of the. The downtown that is in our community is that's where Sky was kind of going, but trying to. Find supporting documentation for the statements that have been made. And that's what's these informations here, here for the community. It was sort of for that.
Michelle, uh, relative to geotechnical, I did have a discussion on this four minutes ago, I'm happy to be in here on Friday. Uh, and uh. After I met the leader morning and. Total confidence that if you have a buildable soil that's in the annexation piece. Outside of wetlands, which will be worked around and so forth. He uh, he doesn't think it's an issue.
No, I'm sure the contractor, it's known our network people and stuff, that kind of information becomes helpful.
True. Thank you for providing the information. Okay, so we have a motion in front of us. We're postponed talking about this topic until. Either we receive written notice that SIO doesn't want the annexation. Or that the well info has been provided and that the P D R status has been clarified. Is that correct? That or less, more or less, yeah. Okay, Joe.
Um, I'm. The the. I I don't know, explicitly stated, we did not schedule another meeting with the with SIO. There was some comments that there, at least on some of the committee members. That they didn't want to continue to, that there wasn't any new ground cover that we had got in from our side or in their side. I I I don't, I agree with it more, I think we covered covered the issue pretty thoroughly. And I expect that we will get written feedback from South Township. Probably, I think in the next week, I think they were talking about having that feedback, so.
You said they're gonna take an action sometime?
They're meeting tomorrow night of the week, so and I. I'm sorry. Well, they they did indicate that they were gonna be back to the moment, so.
I don't have hesitation, I don't I don't mind talking about this for three minutes, if they don't find out where it is, but the motion. On gravity is correct, I don't mind the fact that you don't have the ability to talk about something. But it's similar to the fact that the motion, the the materials are in the packet that we were intending to send to SIO, both in range. If the applicant's completely admitted that he's pursuing a well information and the P D R committee's gonna meet, I think we're gonna know the answer to these. Pretty quickly, so I'm not trying to postpone anything, just because I'd like to be able to talk about. Why I'm showing all those.
A comment of my understanding, SIO's conservation program is that it would be free central ownership. Fifty years.
Thank you.
Uh, I also just want to add that from our perspective, I think um, we have an open application in front of us to this city. So if. Postponing the conversation while we have an open application in front of us that we might need more information in. Needing to communicate with the applicant is is. I I don't know how that is even feasible, so I I agree in some personal with council member Michelle in terms of. We need more information for things to. To give us a direction to go, but just. Uh, postponing it, we might get information for the next meeting and what does that mean, can we just add a next meeting? It it just, I I I don't see the feasibility of postponing it when we have an open application in front of the city.
Okay, during the first call, we're calling again, I'm wanting to postpone.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Griffin, yeah, Sunny Fair.
Yep.
Flack, upper, the Alda, no.
Yeah.
No. Okay, so motion fails. I I just think it would be good to follow through on what we intended to do, which is formally share all of stuff that we've pulled together on our gap. And we did intend, we did intend to have a work session for a reason.
Um, to share our recently entered work session minutes from September eleven. But SIO's intention.
Sir, thank you, Ms. Griffin. Second by its own girl. Any special on comparing going? Thank. There was this all over. Okay.
Upper, yeah, Michelle's.
Yeah.
Flack.
Yeah.
Griffin, yeah, Sunny Fair.
Yes.
Alda, yeah, here.
Yes. Okay, motion carries, anything else you want to do on that other side? We're down to the new business, which is M one, which was formerly K five. With the consideration of the letter of support for the missing middle grant application. Being submitted by grant development group L C from the first class purpose. Would you tell them, uh, would they be submitting a letter of support for missing middle grant applications for me to grant it all through L C, they don't create last part. Second, second, I want, I always bring the ball. Okay, special on that? Is all that?
Uh, just a quick, um, uh. Correction on the the draft letter under the city council, I would appreciate the capacity to be corrected. Um, I think, sorry about that, no worries, if if I have learned today that it's it's been a long time for that to happen with one tip, it's serious, appreciate, thank you.
So I can say the D D A did approve the size of the thing, approved that it is a work. Those are gonna be two letters, it'll be the, I think the thought. It could be either work.
Yeah, my reason for pulling it is because in seeing that reference to that charming task report, I just wanted to familiarize myself with that document. So you can see that I asked a number of questions about it that are listed in the supplement. Thanks, Michelle, for telling me where it was online, I do. Think it would be helpful to have it on and if you want it in a second place, I mean, I'm fine having it where you have it. But they are called out specifically at a war at the mortar commission, but.
No, for this, we. Uh, yeah.
I guess if somebody were. That's why I first went, it seems to me it would be nice to have a link at the bottom of that intro paragraph saying. Here's a completed report, otherwise you're trying to track through agendas and packets and minutes, minutes from the last meeting in twenty nineteen. Figure out where did this end up, where did this go, and I appreciate that we have a search function on the website. If this is going to be a key lighting document then. I don't think I should have it in one place. So with that, then I went and looked at it and it seemed like there are people on the state who might be more aligned with it than I. I guess I was struck by the first recommendation. But there are two recommendations, the first is to hold a public forum to get input from current residents and people working in the city to determine what it is the city wants and needs as far as housing is concerned. Goes on to say, you know, talking about the circumstances in the family residences, that that situation needs to be exacted as the residents of the city prefer. There will be residents saying, I'm here for the community, that is here, I have to change it, I don't want more apartments, definitely in housing or other important last. That is a consensus of the city council and there's nothing further to do. I don't think the city had in such a public forum, was there a public forum generally on housing, how like general?
Just general with the management plan update.
Which happened prior to this.
Best of plan of day, was it twenty eighteen? Uh, best of plan of day was twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, they overlapped for a short period in the housing report, they out beginning the tone.
Right, I guess. Right, and I think I kind of made this comment generally that there is a lot of planning development downtown, high density development downtown, that will be the common eighty one eighty, thirty forty five broad street. Broad street is on sale, then project line place, I still don't know what that is, that is just holding, so which millennial place.
Uh, that's what I've actually realized, it's been approved by council or finalizing the development agreement, which um, city attorney did contact me today. It's ready for signing.
I think the recommendation to have a public forum that's specific to housing was a good one. I was interested to know what the public thinks generally about housing development. When we're able to consider all the potential developments. In one time and place or just the general area in one time and place, that is not a specific development. Otherwise, I think what happens is then these projects come to us in isolation and there's a public hearing specific to that one development and I think what I've been hearing, some of these public hearings, is people want to understand the comprehensive impact of the comprehensive change. To the downtown, the living field, traffic, et cetera. If we're gonna be referring to this specifically in our letter or treating it as. A planning document, I think it makes sense to, I guess, follow up. First recommendation would just have a public forum.
I think we did have a public meeting when the thing was drafted. Or was that a, did we set up and deliver?
It was done in the work section, to publish the event. We didn't have a public forum to collect input from the public as to um, their um. Experiences um, with housing in the city and what people were looking for. The forum wasn't, um, as it's recommended, wasn't intended to be a forum that looks at. The developments here and whether you like it or not, or. It it wasn't that type of forum, it was more of a get the public's experience um. To move uh, to take another, a deeper dive, if you will, into the whole housing uh, issue in that city. Or? Um, okay, so I think all that aside, I want to talk about what we have here, everything that. We have a development that we're looking at, I've heard one thing. Offers a lot of opportunity for a lot of different heights of people, a lot of people who already live here. To move into, they're trying to downsize or let's say, like me, for example, this is a place I would go. I decided I couldn't maintain my home anymore as a single income household. I might look at this, I mean, this is not something I think that we need to debate about whether it's bringing what we want, we, where the we is. You know, what what's wanted here in Dexter or not here, I think there's already a need for this here. And I'm happy to support this. And if we want to have a public forum about what people think about housing, great, I mean, I'll be there, but I don't think that's what we need to be talking about right now.
Time's on the letter of support, Joe, if um.
We did talk briefly about it, it was mentioned at the forum, uh, at the last forum meeting, um. Or maybe it was to to one of the other, I can't remember, um, but it did, we did talk about indoor housing, what that was, um. One of the people I remember Daniel had mentioned said. When I said it was a table, it was based on the county meeting, he said, well, that our teachers, that's about what our, you know, teachers would make. And we talked, I just mentioned, you know, about what that level was, that I think some of the teachers would be able to afford in that range. There was general feedback, I know that's only one area, but I did sense that there was support for people, nobody said we don't need. More affordable housing available for fifteen, for any where it's, so, um. Yeah, that's.
Oh, that's, yeah, I'm glad you said that, because as soon as I stopped talking, I was like, oh, maybe the other two, like. Things I wanted to specifically call out with this project in particular is that it would allow for our teachers who don't live. Be able to live here in the community where they teach and growing up in a community where my teachers live and growing up with my parents or, you know, my mother and my grandmother's teachers, I mean, it strengthens the community to have those particular people living. Inside the city limits, I believe, also, it is somewhere where, say, a firefighter starting up would be able to live within the city limits. Whereas there's nothing like that right now for those those income doubles, there's just nothing like that here right now, there's not. And again, I I mean, it's not about who even who the community wants to bring here or not, and it's about what we already have.
Uh, couple of quick things, if the, if you need for that um, link in the letter to be a link. Um, it it seems to be broken or not, but it works, uh, thank you. Uh, but generally, I think there's, there were two things that were being discussed, one is the the letter of support, which I support. Um, and at the same time, I think that was a conversation, I mean, there was a conversation about a public hearing about housing and just general of that conversation, it's always good to have. Public feedback, so I I don't want these two to be connected as if one is about to negate the other. Um, I think it's always good to have more venues for having public um, input. I thought I, well, we we did that with the fire station and I thought that was a a great conversation. Uh, when when we had it at um, St. Andrews, where we were there, selling would be um. Renovated, uh, so I I I just want to make sure that these two are not being seen as negating each other, being able to be supportive.
Were there any requirements in the condition of temporary approval that require attainable housing or a mix of housing?
In the, in the.
In the planning and development approval, the temporary approval.
Um, no, we did not, they came in with an attainable project.
So that wasn't conditioned in the approval, it could be here are your units and they sell it market rate, right, unless we put that condition on it.
Are you my little danger, or were you asking me a question or not?
What I was asking staff, but I'm cheering for anyone to speak.
So it wasn't a condition of approval that can win the very, um, it's identified in the letters as an attainable project. And the condition of approval cites staff letters. It's certainly something that can be. Considered and baked in.
Considered and baked in at the final and, um, and then. Preserve it into the development agreement. I tend to tread carefully when we talk about, uh, requiring something to be affordable, attainable. For market rate, um, because of the nuances between what their housing will run to require on that. So it's not required as a condition, it is cited in the letter as being proposed as an attainable product. And. The staff letter by reference is a part of the condition of approval. So it's not about specifically, there's sort of a roundabout.
Right, well, that absolutely has to be tightened up by a group approval if it's a condition, uh, otherwise it. Referencing a document can be really tough to enforce, uh, let's see. We also. As a council ought to adopt the formal vote to accept a doc, not just to the workshop. The housing task force, we're going to use it as a policy document, you know, it's, it's a, essentially now a book report from. An APOC committee that has established policy, the committee didn't have to follow open meetings at. Policy body, I'll turn it off, there's a policy that can reference it, that's all.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up as to why I got fever into the housing task force, because that was really the only. Planning document that was specifically called out and made clear to me that it was a planning document, against the master plan it's mentioned. I would love to be able to, if we are making a statement, we, several of the cities playing in economic development goals, to identify. Where the language and new breed bullet comes from, or is paraphrased from. If I search within our master plan, I can't find. Anything that says. Affordable housing, attainable housing, I can't find the word attainable, when it comes to afford, I don't see anything that's specific to that. When I search the word diversity, I don't see anything that says diversity of housing type, um, I'm not necessarily saying I disagree with these, but if. We're saying in a letter, we have these goals, I want to be able to find where it was stated. Goals are very close to paraphrasing them. And I agree that. If we want housing task force report to be. Pulled from the same way that we pulled from the master plan or the C I P or these things like that, I think. That needs to have a public hearing mechanism or somebody to get public feedback on it before council just decide. That's going to be a future planning. So if I were to have, I guess that's what I was getting at, where did, uh, we set question and supplement. Where did the language in those products come from? I can only support this letter if I have a better theory on that and we didn't have a letter to review for a long period of time, they didn't have an opportunity to really. So I can't, I mean, I can't support it for that reason and I hope that if we do, we can talk about other efforts to engage the public about housing in general.
Michelle, remind me when this is due or when, um.
Their application has to be submitted by the end of the month, September.
We are looking by some, by our work to support the letter of work. Yes.
Hubbard, yeah, Michelle's.
Yes.
Alden, yeah, Schla.
Yes.
Griffin, no, Kia.
Yes.
Uh, we now to do business. Uh, first, the first item is a discussion of. Turn it over to Justin, you and David.
Sure, so, um, I read a memo starting at three thousand one hundred fifty five. To give a brief update on, um, the conversations we had, been going on at the B O T D. Uh, facilities user group, um, and David, uh, one part of our catcher. Um, just to give her, uh. Presentation, uh, last night, um, and above that, David would kind of lead us through that presentation and. Later, you know, have a conversation during or following that.
Okay, all yours, sir.
Thank you very much, it's great to be here again with you guys tonight. This is Justin said, we're going to do a progress update, uh, and answer questions. And by helping to ask questions during the process of the week until the end. A lot of what you're going to see is going to look familiar, some of it's going to be, you know, very similar to what you've seen before. So the first thing is going to be an overview of the progress, cover the temporary accommodation, building concept updates. Budget and then focus on questions. What I feel we're going to do there, our goal and objectives for the project is to stay steady and firm and for guiding. Principles moving, uh, the project ahead. The program summary is, I included this to recap, there's one minor change in this and it kind of, it got boiled down. Last time we looked at this, it showed a number of schemes, particularly the budget model and near the bottoms. So we, at the last meeting, a decision was made, the last council meeting, decision was made to move forward with the new building. And explore additional options and the truth story from Main Street up was the option we left that meeting on. This one emphasized that the, the ad there was reduced square feet as possible and I'm just going to compare that bottom right hand number sixteen thousand nine forty-one. That's the planned size of that scheme, two-story scheme below Main Street. What we were aiming at, based on the program, which is kind of void of layout, et cetera, it was at sixteen thousand, uh, one hundred thirty-nine. So there's still a little delta there in that, when I said, our, our mission leaving the last meeting was to explore, one of them was to. How do we reduce some square feet, and we were able to do that just by moving things around and tightening things up. The next, uh, second is the temporary accommodations, uh, what I reviewed with you last time was. Um, a couple of things, we're really focused on accommodating the function at the city hall here. Got a addition of a temporary building or a structure. Uh, that would be installed in the parking lot to house apparatus, you may remember that was thirty-three feet wide by fifty feet long. And that's kind of middle, left side of the page, their page one four. And what's shown there is now a single apparatus, you know, a structure, so it's smaller, it takes up less footprint in the site. And allows for some existing parking to remain existing parking. Um, just to kind of summarize, parking as a whole there, we're adding the six along here on. And overall, this net two, uh, gained spaces during the temporary occupancy. And then when the structure would vacate, there would be six in addition. Um, just to clarify that, temporary structure is a product, it's ordered out of the catalog, it's metal sided. Polyfabric roof that's staked into the ground, it's got hours heated, there's no sanitaries, no water. It just kind of shows up, situates itself in the site and is used and then the provider comes back and takes it away. And when they're gone, it looks like nothing was ever there. Um, I won't recap too much in detail of how it existing, this building's being used, but it's going to accommodate firefighters and their, uh. Crew area, they're, they're living during the day and they're living during the night, uh, including, uh. Dorm area as well as facilities for cleanup and cooking, et cetera. And all that would be vacated when they left and made to look just like this. Uh, any questions on that? Uh, the next sheet five is, you know, just a schematic of what that structure is, so it's a frame element with metal siding, like it's a polyfabric roof. And it's got the one, one door. There are intended to be two apparatus on site, the engine would be in this and then the rescue would be in the. Uh, lower part of the building, uh, down, down. Next slide, uh, covers, uh, really some updated new materials. So when we left here as the last meeting, as a committee, we kind of recapped what we thought we heard and, um. We began to look at some new schemes, uh, new, new build, new schemes. We evaluated, uh, five bays along Main Street with two bays at the park. Um, and dedicated parking for staff at park level. It was cost prohibitive, it was mentioned against the budget we were working with, and we went into a four bay on Main Street. And a four bay at park level, trying to capitalize on constructability, simplicity and efficiency, so. What was on Main Street was going to be right at the park, so the same kind of footprint. That also provided more parking or staff, fire staff on the apron, which was a real plus in that scheme, but it too was also. Cost prohibitive. Then we looked at another, uh, scheme, which from a budget standpoint was viable and a creative idea of taking. Um, the bay part of the Main Street structure and putting all of what we had for crew living. Uh, and operations and office, which was basically paralleling Alpine Street and put it on top of the bay. So we, you know, we created again efficiencies like we did with the four bay at the park and four bay at main. We put all the living, crew and office on top of the bay and created that constructible efficiency and it was. It reduces square footage and it reduced the cost of the building. Part of the motivation is looking at that, is again, to the mission of looking at options, but also, um. Parking remained a pretty strong con, uh, conversation through a committee, meaning. Where do we put staff or sheriff, where, where staff or fire? This scheme allowed us to put ten onsite spots, uh, from Alpine into. The site of main, basically where the existing office areas are, so we were, we were capturing land area for parking. With a parking on Alpine and parking on site, uh, and that really is what pushed that scheme over the budget, it really wasn't online. Although the building scheme, uh, really showed to be a benefit, it will cost anything. Then, then we evaluated additional options, uh, that you can kind of a la carte add, uh, to. Really any of the schemes, we really kind of came back to, uh, they will cover all of those, it really came back to. The six bays on Main Street, uh, the two stories above Main Street, it's really kind of how we went through that process evaluating. Function first, then cost second, cost then would be a reason to root it out. And we really longed out back at the sixth bay on Main Street, um, as we looked at together, you know, last time in August. Um, and then we had a conversation, our last, uh, meeting, uh, committee meeting was to further explore ideas. Um, to solve the parking concern, uh, even with the six bays on Main Street and the two stories above. We still have the parking issue, we'll kind of cover that in a second and a little bit, but the idea, and we didn't get too far into that. Question, most of the idea except that, uh, we're going to temporarily house fire and sheriff while construction is going on. Why not make this portion of this building potentially permanent home for the sheriff? That would alleviate parking issues on the Main Street and then create some flexibility to optimize the construction of the fire. Uh, we didn't get into that, but I'm confident that we can create some construction efficiencies by squaring up buildings. And planning the first floor or the second floor, again, of constructibility efficiencies. So those are the things that we went through as a committee after our last kind of directive from council. And I'll share with you as we kind of go through the next couple of slides on the. The two-story scheme above Main Street, so here's the site, and again, I'll step over and point out a couple of things. Uh, not new, but I wanted to reemphasize that, uh, in this parking arrangement, it pushes into the park by about sixteen feet. So the edge that's there now goes north about sixteen feet. It gives us appropriate maneuvering space in between a double loaded parking for passenger vehicles. Uh, there is no apparatus in the park level, so that eases that issue. Uh, we do have a green buffer between the building and the parking edge, which really gives us an urban bankment that couldn't. Only into the building to be on Main Street. But we're at twenty-eight parking spaces as compared to twenty-one currently, so we're adding about thirty-three percent parking in the park level. In this approach. Uh, the other thing I wanted to point out is the building as a whole is pushed back also. Now, it counts for that distance I talked about at the park, but it gives a greater area for maneuvering for apparatus off of Main Street. So they're able to pull onto the apron and maneuver themselves into the bay without having to do that work on Main Street. Really kind of alleviates some of the traffic, you know, stress. Uh, all this kind of remains the same in terms of what we've looked at before, but I'll just recap. We're adding, uh, parking in the right of way, we'll have to, uh, make some changes there with the right of way, um, width. Um, and then we're filling in what looks like now, you know, slowed down to Main Street, so we're going to be filling in from that sidewalk up to the building area. So it has a more approachable feel, uh, in, in terms of streetscape and the way the building situated, situated itself. Through the next slide, this is the floor plan, um, and this is similar to what, uh, you looked at before. Like I mentioned earlier about square footage, we're trying to condense square feet where we can, without compromising functionality. We're still kind of preserve some flexibility in the plan. Basically, the left side or right side, I'm sorry, the blue vertical element is the crew quarters, operations are mostly living area. Um, but then the space that happens in between the blue and the red right here from here is a crew operations, all of that's the apparatus. So it's six bays that meets the U F C guideline in terms of facing the front back and between apparatus. And this is the support side, basically the more contaminated space than the fire station is further away from the living areas. And we do show a stair in the bottom left-hand corner of that, um, that might look like a remnant of what we had area at the lower level. And it did serve the lower level, um, but this is for the hose drying tower element. Uh, so that kind of pops up, so you could, uh, hang the hoses and dry them and not do it through equipment. Um, ideally, we'd like to have a mezzanine all the way across that, um, and that's some, some of the conversation we're having right now. But that's currently in, in the budget. Next slide is the second level, uh, above main, it really is aligning with, uh, Alpine Street. And this accommodates the fire administration, the command office areas and also sheriff. And a mezzanine that kind of overlooks into the, to the bay, it also has two public entries. Uh, one for fire designated for fire entry and then one for sheriff. Um, and that by the top red triangle and the, um, for the sheriff is the bottom red triangle, there is also a portion. Um, so the very bottom is a green room, so that's a, the roof of the area below. Um, ideally, if some options are exercised, maybe that gets built out, but for now, it would be rooftop. Engineered, so future, you could add a floor space on top of it for multi-virtuous retreat. So, uh, we could be constructed in a way that you do that sometime in the future. So that's the building, as we left this aligned with the budget that we were working with. Um, for the options, a fair consideration to add on to that, very first one is page eleven. Is, um, two full-size bays at the park level. And basically a support space that equals the width of a bay. And this would align directly with, uh, what's above. And, um, we chose this space geometrically as a square, it's more efficient from a construction standpoint. And therefore, for budgeting, it's, um, more cost effective for this square footage. The dash, uh, kind of L or converted L up to the top right is where a future park. Or the option for the park lobby and link, we've been covered that in the next slide. Um, cost for this, um, uh, near thirty-three hundred square feet, it's a trip over one point two million. And that's in the raw space form to complete it, it would be usable, but it wouldn't be to the full extent. Needed to be a, uh, functioning fire bay. It would be usable, but it wouldn't be to the full extent needed to be a functioning fire bay. It would be tempered code minimum, power, lighting and heat. But the space would be raw, not given to the white box kind of build out.
Does it include a concrete floor?
Concrete floor. It would be concrete walls, not concrete floor. You'd see the structure above. They would have hanging gas fire heating units just to keep it at 55 degrees. You'd have fire protection down there. Proton fire exiting lighting.
Thank you.
Would be ready to go to the next. The next slide is the option to put in the raw space for the public lobby at the park level. And there's the link to connect it to that, the first slide, which is that apparatus with the bay area. Which is dashed. I'll point out and I'll cover it a little slide or two later. It's to the top of that green box is another dashed line which represents the elevator and stair. That would be access from Alpine. And they have three stops in the elevator in downtown park. And I'll cover that in a minute or two. But this would be the addition option of 388,000. And what's that build out to finish it at 155,000? Build out to finish it would be a custodial closet and two restrooms and a warming lobby for those that are in the park area. And so it gets, it would get finished out if we get over the 155,000. The next slide basically shows that connected together, the bay and the public lobby. The next slide number 14 also illustrates how the stair and elevator would be kind of filled in. Next slide 15 is another option, which would be on Alpine Street, where we previously looked at having a multi purpose space in between the fire administration and the sheriff. That could be access for public use, certainly be access from both fire and police for sheriff for their use. That option was 405,000 to add that in. And that's if you do it now. If you do it later, it's a little different. We'd have that green roof for that structured roof to kind of then move things around. But if you were to opt to do that now, you could hear better value. Then the next slide is 16. It covers how the elevator stair, off of the lobby, that fire area would be situated. And I'll just recap that again. So you'd enter off of Alpine into a lobby. Or that would be you're going fire services or you're going down to the park. I would imagine that's going to be used quite a bit by parkgoers for the accessibility reason of the elevator. But I also see the stair being used quite a bit also. And that elevator would stop at three points, Alpine, Main Street, and then go down to the park. The reason it stops at Main Street is for fire services on off hours when the command staff isn't in the building. There would be a communication way for public, the internet lobby communicating with fire staff on Main Street. And then they would by credentials allow them to use the elevator to go down to Main Street if they needed to get into the elevator. Another way they could have weekend or after hours fire service to the public without having them go into the fire station on the apron at Main Street. That keeps it safer for everyone. And also then reinforces the fact that that is the entry for fire reasons. It would be clear and obvious as part of the architecture on Alpine Street that that's where you go if you're going for fire station business. So that element is three levels, Alpine, Main Street and then down to park is $635 addition. And we're looking at how do we dissect that? We could defer the elevator, build the shaft and the pit and defer the elevator and the power requirements for the elevator for future. If you wanted to do a little now, a little later, it just kind of gives you a breakdown on a different way to make it. Any questions on the options that we went through?
I have one basic question for the chief, or maybe you can answer. What are the six bays going to be for? What apparatus are going with six bay?
Oh, chief can handle that one.
I can think of five. And want to come on the same page with the basic, the basic assumption would go back to the six bays. And I just would like to know what I can, what's going in there?
Tanker.
Tanker.
Engine.
Engine.
Potentially an aerial.
Yep.
Rescue.
That considers the ambulance?
Yeah, ambulance.
Okay.
Got a squad. Or utility. That's what prior to most of it too, once the ambulance is in service. And we've got the UTV and trailer.
Thank you.
And got thinking beyond that is at some point it would make sense for us to have a reserve engine. When we place one well into the future and keep one of our engines that's in reasonable shape as a backup because we frequently do have a period of time where we have one of our engines currently now that is service. And that does grant the entire system better scoring from current service organization as well as just provide the other team.
Okay, then let's go ahead. Can I understand, so then what will be the two substation?
Got tanker, another tanker that would be out there. They each got an engine, they each got a squad. And got our life safety trailer. Potentially may have another UTV at some point because we're certainly getting high use and high response to the trail system here. But we also have trail and recreation areas out in areas of townships. And it's conceivable that we could have another ambulance at some point in time. If we end up, if people in the future are getting into the transport. Well, they currently have a, it's an ambulance that's been converted into a water rescue tow vehicle and trailer equipped that are housed in the substation for your government.
Thank you.
The next several slides, any other questions?
That's the only answer I have.
Okay, the next several slides just gives you a general idea of the new massing. Previously we should have did this with five bays on Main Street. So since we were kind of really moving in this direction, we updated that to show the six bays and how that would situate itself. The second slide number, or the second image number 18, I just want to walk through that, how that changes along Alpine. So there would be a sidewalk extended from basically the farmer's market along Alpine. And it would have a green belt in between the sidewalk and the building, which would kind of make some softening of that, how it beats the street. And also it takes care of some of that slope. So it slopes towards Main Street from the farmer's market. And obviously the floor, I don't know if we're all on the same level. So we need something to traverse that change from most north area of fire down to the south area of sheriff. The image on 18 shows the building as though a multi purpose space were incorporated. This would look different in the green roof area. So basically that little chunk in the front would be a green roof. And I was sort of going to mock that up and look at it in terms of how that really presents itself in the book. The next image again is along Alpine, kind of indicating the two main bays, fire and sheriff and entry points though, which you can kind of see what that is about. Slope of the sidewalk and how that needs to have ramps up to the Alpine Street floor line. And at least kind of flipping through the next couple of slides, it gets us to the, I think it gives a good idea what the building materials could be like and having some variation to create emphasis on the two entries. And give a proper stature of a fire station, municipal building, especially on Main Street. And you get the slide number 22. Create your artillery to a clover. Point four and point five, I want to kind of draw your attention to it. Six bays were pushing the building towards the drive that leads Main Street down to the park area. So that embankment is going to be an engineered embankment. It's shown as green, but it'll have kind of a combination of retaining wall that might be boulders or some sort of engineered makes me a wall. And then some greary to take care of that slope. It's not as steep and real when you do the map. It's not that steep, it's more artistically shown. And then we go to the slide number 26, which really gives you a part view as compared to what's there now. The whole over level would be an engineered fill embankment as a podium. Basically for the building ones, there'd be a lot of green on the backside of that building. And generally not approachable from foot unless we're going to put in there elevator and lobby. We'll probably access up to meet the Alpine Street. The next couple of slides, kind of go through the updated capacity model. Slide number 27 is a similar format and information to what you looked at before. This will be spoken is on that six bays and the two stories above Main Street. There is some differences through the committee conversations. We had previously itemized the parking on Alpine Street in the right of way as an option. And in the discussion, it was clear that parking has always been an issue and how we solve the public separation apparatus maneuvering by staff parking, the fire and sheriff. So we moved what was an option as we initially presented it in August. 161,000 for Alpine Street parking into the project. So that number, 7,426 for construction includes that. It also includes the delta of cost projected for city hall temporary accommodations. You may remember the version that we carried cost wise in that number in August was the $45,000 version. But it got increased with accommodations for living showering facilities for firefighters. It did however, we get reduced because we went from that 33 foot wide temporary structure to the 21 foot wide temporary structure. So there was a minus 7,000 there. So the net difference was 45,000 originally in the budget to 193 in this number. So that 7,426 includes the 161 for parking in Alpine plus the delta of temporary combinations. Where anything else, it remains the same percentage wise and kind of ratchets itself to that first number. I'll reemphasize the thing that aren't for the storm shelters, I believe it's not fully required. Still pending. Living off space functionality, as I mentioned in the programming slides, has been minimized where we can, which really kind of hinders some future flexibility or big flexibility. There is some. Again, sheriff's technology and furnishing, loose equipment is in the budget. Space to build out is in the budget. But moving their computers, their whatever they need to function, that would be by them or certainly outside of the budget we have it set up. Soft costs, I'm going to make a correction here. It says right there at the bottom, temporary day quarter. So that number is already in the 7,426. So you can scratch that, it's not part of the soft costs. Soft costs for all the necessary things that you would need for a functioning fire station or a building for that matter. And include some of the expenses we already incurred, bond issuance, architectural fees, engineering fees, some of those kind of things that you've already spent money on, geotechnical survey, et cetera. That's already been spent, but it's in that number.
So where are the temporary day quarters?
That is in the construction cost number.
Okay, so it's up in the 7.4 and not the 8.3?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, the next, the next slide kind of recaps those options. We kind of covered the costs as we were looking at them. But just to kind of summarize, those are the numbers from the slides. One, the very bottom wasn't picked it in the slide as a cost, but it's the right of way parking on Main Street. So when that adds, it's $23,000. So it'd be in addition to what budget shows.
David, what is the, what is the savings to the 7.4 if we have five bays up top?
Well.
Approximately. The reason I ask is I'm supportive of the base of the problem. Or the potential for future space. And like the UTV or the thing that goes on the trails, you know, would be better off on the bottom. It would be on the top frankly. So I'm going to make a case for the space on the bottom, which is 1.2 million. It could be offset by some saving of 1.65. But the savings is in the retaining wall, you won't need to move the building over.
Exactly. And the other thing, I'm glad you said that because then we can recap your four or five additional parking spaces on the bay. Just if you want to sum that up in your mind, so it's about $500,000 savings.
So the net is 700,000 to put the bays downstairs on. If we just go to five thousand upstairs, that became a lot more attractive for you.
Yeah. A couple of things I'll point out just relative to the budget, not necessarily. In the construction number, we have, we're carrying $80,000 for traffic light just in case. So that's maybe not spent, but it's in the budget. So that's something to be. The other thing is undedicated owner contingency of 409,000. That's at 5.5. That's a very good comfortable number. So if you add those up, you're pretty close to $500,000 with discretion area. We'll call it discretion, but you're going to need some, sure. Now. And you know, to me, that gives us, there's a little comfort in knowing that because we're tight on, we're, we're tight. There's not, we didn't throw any extra. This is a real best guess at asking, we did not throw something in for.
I'm excited that we have an option that mostly fits the budget. I think there's some extra things we need to talk about. But if anybody had before we get into details, anybody have any questions to David on the presentation? Or the introduction to the back?
Yeah. So I'm just taking an option review of slide 28. For public verticals, you're feeling two, the two things that I was curious to see in an end location. There are water restaurants and an elevator, a different way to make the public, to help the public access part from Alpine Street. Please review where those options appear here as an option or if it's not at all, just like.
So the discussion of the park access from Alpine is all an option. It's not a base program for the budget.
I mean, that's specifically, is it just item number four on slide 20? Is it three and four?
She asked, so four is the elevator, three includes the basement, or are there two to back in the job?
So yeah, that's right. So the three is the space to house the lobby, the restrooms and the custodial area. So you can do that without the elevator. So then you'd have a space down at the park level for that function. If you wanted to go to the extra enhancement, you'd do the stair and the elevator. And that would be the 635. So if you're doing the whole shebang, it's the 388 plus the 635 to do.
What, what 155 is?
155 if you want to finish that.
Yeah, if you want to finish it up, yes.
And subtract one, I mean, find that quite a grab if you want.
Correct. We want to refer to the elevator to the future install time. I know it's a little complicated, but as we were going through this, we were trying to create, we wanted to create the full view of what it could be and then dissect it into pieces that you could select if budget allowed now. But we've also planned it in a way that within. Now, but we've also planned it in a way that with the exception of the thing underneath the bays. All the other stuff you could add on and add on and add on. It it really drove the way the. Building plan worked itself out. So you could do that at a future time. The only thing that you really think if you're going to do it. You need to do raw space or build up space at the park level below the base. If you're going to do that now, certainly be the time to do it.
Is it cheaper to install the? Vertical circulation? Et cetera, at the same time as you're building the. Is it cheaper to do it? Or is that is that six thirty-five likely built a building and we come back two years later?
It's cheaper to build it all at one time. But that is the number you've built it all at one time.
That's the number you're building today at all. Okay, I understand. Thank you. Zach.
I'm going to try to roll through these quickly. Fifty-three thousand or no, how much was it for the temporary parking?
Hundred and seventy-one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I'm curious, is that hot mixed asphalt? Or is it gravel?
No, it's asphalt.
Okay, we we got to get with our engineers. So it's going to come out.
It's designed to be or it's intended to be a temporary solution.
Okay, that is my question because I think we've heard from my engineers that it's more than ten thousand for. Books, okay. Any questions related to building code, both temporary doors building here? My understanding is international building code when we have sleeping quarters at a mixed use building, we have sprinkled. There are a couple of exceptions, but.
There are there are exceptions and we would not sprinkle it. We, yeah. If we, if we get to that point where we're engineering it, we'll just do it off the domestic line. We will do full goals. We'll just do domestic lines in that sleeping quarters or.
Okay, so just that that will be sprinkled.
Correct.
Okay, um, for the dormitories in the the most recent plan, I only see one means of egress. My understanding is building code is for three or below. You have to have multiple means unless a couple of very. Rare exceptions that have been whittled down from from year to year in building code.
From the sleeping quarters itself is one and then its travel distance after that. We have a direct exit from the sleeping quarters outside.
I thought they're below break.
No, they're not.
In the in the permanent.
Oh, you mean, I'm sorry. I thought you were thinking of this building since we were talking about.
No, I.
Is your question regarding this building or the news station?
It was both.
News. And that is. That is somewhat on the brink of, do we really need it? Code wise, no. But we can do separations, but we generally put them in the building even if it's not code part. So in the budget, it's planned to be in. The building, the new building.
Just the the sleeping quarters in the entire?
No, both.
Okay. What's the what's the cost of sprinkling the entire building in Raleigh?
It's going to be around eighty-nine thousand, I guess.
If there were windows that wouldn't have to be pulled over, okay.
We can do fire separation like wall construction types. And then we can compartment to lies.
All right, um. Do you have an idea of the volume of fill that this plan will require within the floodplain?
I don't. It's a calculation of that.
All right.
We're generally about thirty feet into the floodplain. From the back of the building or from the back of the current building.
All right, I know it's not sexy, but that's. That's a lot of volume and it's going to have to be, it's very likely going to have to be cut out from somewhere else. So it's not neutral.
That that's the point is that there would be mitigation to some areas in the park.
The plans apparently continue to, unless we add the elevator that's opening over public. Not have the means of access between the upper floor, the office areas and the day quarters without going through the hot zones, that correct?
Correct. Hot zone, meaning the apparatus.
The the spot where they get cancer.
Yeah.
Which today, I'm not sure if folks saw more firefighters who died from nine eleven related stuff than actually on nine eleven's.
So the way we have the zone is the contaminated. Most contaminated part of the building is separated from the apne. Even though we call it a dirty space, the contamination is in the decon space. So it's it truly is separated, even though we go through the. Rigors of putting additional. Spaces that go from apne into the living quarters. We have a zone of decontamination that is one airlock pressurized and then has an air curtain. On those two access points. But to your point, it doesn't occur as the way the plan is now happening.
But then there's going to be.
We could do it. This does.
Just stop a moment. If there is going to be decent particulate and I, none of these plans have a separate spot for cleaning the vehicles off from contaminants, right?
Um, nothing in the building, so that will be out in the.
Okay, um. We have to be very mindful for that storm water flows then. It can't go into regular storm water. It has to be in the tree.
It goes into the sedimentation treatment.
Yeah. Exactly. Right, okay. My understanding, when I'm focused, that it does have to go through the storm, through. The regular sanitary sewer going through storm door.
Correct. We we still put those outside, not we don't put it in those, we put outside.
Okay.
For services.
Let's see. Is there? Just based on my quick look at Matt Washington, I think elevation change. From the uphill. Apron where it hits the road to where the down end of the apron would hit the road. How are we going to manage that and collect the contaminated water coming off the truck? That is a huge gradient.
Tell me that again, six feet from the.
So where the apron is shown here as intersecting the road. To where it would continue following off and what these plans are, it's probably a six foot change in elevation on Main Street.
From the Alpine side down?
No, on the Main Street side.
What's it I meant? From on Main Street near Alpine, have the apron entry point?
Yep.
I don't think it's quite that much, but it is a distance in the slopes. So it would be a complex slope on Main Street and then level itself back out. So it would be level at. The apron entry point or the building entry point.
Okay, um. Based on the the site, it seems like there would be limitations on where an aerial apparatus can go. I don't suspect it would be able to be in either the side bays. It's going to have to be in one of the middle. That fair?
Um, no, I I think there's options to do on the end bay going. Closest to the creek. That would be a operational decision that the chief department made. But the wider bay.
Going to make that turn?
Oh, with exit out. That turn would be tough, but I think. Exit out onto Main Street going right is a more challenge from the end bay than the middle. And the reason I say at the end bay, Zach, is that they have a couple of extra feet. On the end bays in terms of bay width. So that just makes it easier to maneuver or longer happen due to a vacuum situation. It it may turn out that it's in bay two or bay three when they get it.
Well, I'm thinking of maneuvering out on the site. When I I toured the facility at Milford. They couldn't park it on the far side because. They couldn't turn right of of the lot and they cursed it and they kicked it rough whenever they walked past it. They were the kid, they're Italians spitting on the things. It was.
Yeah, I I'm looking at the geometrics on the plan right now and it kind of, and these aren't aerials. The two aerials were were the geometrics of the bay one and two. It's like the engine is in bay five. So I would say that that looks maybe easier in the first two bays. Which I think gives you a little more flexibility going right. Gives you the same challenge where left. You know, maybe maybe it's bay three, you know, when they get a couple. Maneuvers under their belt and might determine it's bay three or bay four.
All right, and and that will affect. The use of floor within the bays for both we have.
Yeah, they'll they'll want to put the most access apparatus both of them.
It limits staging.
Yeah.
Um. It doesn't appear, and correct me if I'm wrong, that each floor has its own janitor space. Is that correct? I've got the slot button.
Yeah, we have a janitor involved situation, yes.
On the upper floor?
No, I don't see it. So we had that in. It's called storage, but I think we'd make it a combination.
Is there space for the S C B A storage in the wall?
Yes. In the label S C B A fill. So it's the blue box, the main room, when we support that on Main Street. We're talking about this exact plan.
Why? No, I don't know. Um, why the decision to have a hose tower instead of a hose dryer?
Initially. Well, not sure if it has to need to do it that way. Initially, we were looking at the vertical circulation for that and. And and a hopeful mezzanine, a budget kind of drove the mezzanine to a sideline. But that was the design path we were going down, having that vertical circulation. So that element made sense.
All right, uh.
I think I'm.
Yeah, well, I understand there's a lot of detail about council on the show on scope here. This specifically was an item to go through the design options for the fire station. Not go through new share of the design process. That this literally is not what this, the start item of. I mean, I understand the the interest. I understand that Mr. Michelle doesn't want with fire station there, wants to come up with every idea and reasons he can. To discredit it, but that's not what this discussion I have about. This discussion I have is about the items that are presented there. The options are used in the design overall. Noted that level one.
Yeah, thank you. I'm I'm glad that council member has. Full knowledge of what I'm trying to do and insight into my soul and my thoughts. I appreciate that. So I guess I'll go to the big, big picture then, since that's what it's supposed to be. Along with challenging aspects of the project, the amount of space. Space for parking relation to budget, space for budget. This talks about having to steal money from our parking fund. About having to steal money from our road fund. About potentially having to move the farmer's market to a destination unknown, about potentially taking money from our parks fund. We're we're spreading potentially. Different functions all over the place like where Tom Riddle with Horcruxes were trying to hide our soul in.
I need to be back to Florida. I think the question is not to. No words like stealing like there, if they know. Only the feeling anyway.
We're we're taking money dedicated for one, the Thor project, that to me.
That's a good question. Good enough?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so. Two things. One is that all those detailed questions are things that we do need to pay attention to. And have a list of the, my understanding from the conversation in the committee we had is that when we. Figure the figure direction of the design of the building. Then you will then delve into really actually going into the minutia of every single space and all of that. So, um. There is, um. I think there is time for those questions and I think, uh. The expertise that council member Michelle is bringing to the table from his years of. Paying attention and working on fire stations. I think that can be valuable, um. And I don't want to negate that, but I do agree that we we do want to. Make sure that we are providing a direction first of what the. Shape and the bigger concept of the building would be before going into. The the details of it. The other thing for me is that in terms of the seduction about. Um, additional funding. Um, and I I I do also, I have to say not appreciate the verb steal that was. Used in this context. In our August eight, twenty twenty-two meeting, when we discussed. The mileage, um, language on the ballot for last November. To the for the amount that we wanted to add and ask our residents. In that conversation, we clearly talked about. What we think of the initial amount that we want to ask people and the residents would be. To have the building that will provide the needs of the. The firefighters and our city. For now and into our future. We also talked about that there are areas of that we would like to see additional things. That are above and beyond that, um. That initial scope. And for that, we, I was one of those that asked the staff to look into different funding options or potentialities. And we asked them to look at everything. And that was another thing I, I mean, after one of the committee members, I also asked. Our city manager to look into those funding options of everything that we could. Have as an option. Because what we discussed in that August eight meeting was to have. What do we want to put out front of the people and ask people to give us what is the. Needs. And the program that was discussed to cover those needs. I think that that the committee and. David and, um. Mister Ashley have worked nicely to figure that out and put out front of us and give us a series of options. That that we would see what are the other fundings available to us, whether it is within our city, whether it's. Our county, whether it's our state, whether it's, um, federal funding. Um, to look at all those options to see what is available out there for us to see what are their options. And things we can add to this. Um, so just something that we all discuss at the table. And is the direction we provided. It's something that is physically responsible. And being a good steward of looking at all of our options should not have words associated with it. That is just. Not becoming of the body.
So, does anybody have questions for David on his presentation? I think you can move through the second part of the. Information is in a packet or. Move to end three. There is. I've been here considering an item. You didn't sit down when you call on me. You did a great job going through what what you've done. Thank you.
We do.
I personally would like to see. Us continue with its design. And move out of the concept planning stage and into a design stage. I'm understanding that. As they continue to move forward, there may be refinements that they're able to make and things they're able to figure out. But. I mean, I guess my question to the committee, this is the only option we've seen that that fits the budget, right? Let's go through that. That list on. Page, um. Six in the backup, you know, we started, looked at the five days and two in the bay. I I personally think five days is the way to go and try to get to the space at the bottom as a long term thing. But. You know, maybe maybe the designer should be advanced. For the larger building, so we can actually bid and then decide what to add and delete. And I'd like to see some of these designs that that evolve and. Because I'm for I'm for the that just based down below as well as the elevator and ultimately the upstairs on the bottom level. And it's been sort of design and when you take take this into the next stage of design.
I have questions for our chief and I just, um, want to make sure so we moved on to.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I can ask if there are any questions on the information, I didn't get any, but if you have them, let's start with the question there.
On M two.
Okay.
What? Are we on M two?
We have left two to three, but I'm happy to take the questions and that, you know, hoping there's a motion and all three complete, I agree. But what are your questions?
Are we being asked, so this consideration of direction regarding public safety facilities tonight, we're being asked to like pick from this. Our presentation, like Newville content, one, twice, action, whatever, or something like, are that's what you're looking for?
I think so. I think that the the next danger that would be to have, um, uh. And we've been in a concept stage, concept and then concept stage, and they brought back an option that fits the budget. But there are some additional things that are not part of the base scope, that I think would be good as alternates, one which. Is the elevator and the duck to get people from down mine down to not stairs, not stuff. About the elevator stairs to get downstairs, the the restrooms, we don't have to do all of that. We don't have to accept it all today, but we but they do need to design it in order to get bids on it. So I I I think we should, I think we should approve having them move to the design with all of those. As added alternates, that's what I would call them. That is that that the proper term, David?
Yeah, add alternates.
Add alternates, right?
So, yeah, I guess I'll ask my questions if I can do that. Jesse Chief Smith, I mentioned Mars, right? There was a long time before she said, let's forgive you for that. Uh, and it was only recently that you changed your email. Name and your signature, I think that reduces it all. Uh, so looking at the options on page six, uh. I'm just looking back again to the information we disseminated, disseminated prior to the election, uh, about what. What the bond issuance would do for the player. So we talked about increasing operational capacity of the V A F D. I guess I'm curious to understand. To what extent do any of these options increase the operational capacity? Which of these options best out of that, how close do any of these options get to an ideal increase in operational capacity? What's the most significant?
Finding an ideal operational capacity is 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 definitely a challenge, just. Trying to think twenty thirty, one more years in the future, so, um. That being said, uh, more base space, I mean, we're already defined, uh. You know, what we would use the big, the proposed base base for and. You know, command vehicles and there were a few other things that that aren't even included in that list. So having more base spaces is crucial and will continue to be crucial as. Again, into the future as the area of population grows, the demands of the apartment grow, addition may. Even grow, just depending on, yeah, that's needs going forward. Having more firefighters, being able to sleep more than we, the the two that we currently live now, so having additional dorm rooms. Which is in there, having separate space for cleaning gear, hose, equipment. That is properly ventilated and appropriately separated from, you know, living areas. Is important, that's incorporated in, uh, the versions that we've, um, considered.
But the training is not in any of that, correct?
Correct.
And what is the trade off there? And how often do you connect and do you have just your mind, do you mean?
We're we're training almost daily, uh, but a lot of that daily training is sort of shift based, so it's it's. Firefighters that are upon duty, that we do invite and sometimes gets part piano call or part time firefighters joining that training. Uh, at at different times, but there's also a need for regular, uh, at least once a month. Or possibly twice a month of having the entire department or groups come together. Whether it's hosting training for the the region or our neighbors and getting together. We we do do some joint training in Chelsea, we do some with Sias, we work with them frequently, they have the ability to train with them is important. That to me is further down the list, it's it's a really important, nice to have. Uh, I don't know that it's a need to have when, if if it means cutting some of these other operational pieces. Because there are areas that, you know, we we for years, we pull vehicles out of base spaces and and trade there. Obviously, that's not the cleanest place to do it, but there are areas like. You know, the the city hall, if, uh, you know, we can borrow that from time to time, there's the library, there are other areas. The challenge with training space at this location, which again moves it down to my priority list, is parking. We're gonna have a training space for thirty people, you don't have necessarily parking for thirty people at a busy time. So having the space is great, but if we can't bring accommodate the vehicles and and apparatus and things that people might bring to that training. It it becomes a a trade off again, those approved animals.
So then, given how training currently is happening, how often? Would our station ever be not manned because everybody's at training?
Yes, that does occur, you know, we're out of the, out of one of the substations, uh, potentially.
Twice a month, where?
Uh, it's. Well, really, anytime we get our sh- even a shift together, we're not. Physically manning all of the stations, so, uh, you know, this becomes. Probably the most ideal location out of the the three stations, because we we kind of have equal. Equal distance out to cover the the township areas when when there's a call, we pull everybody to one side or the other side. It can lead to a slight delay in responding, so why they didn't.
So then the other point, so, you know, earlier we've been considering renovating, now this is new, so. Do you feel like these designs sufficiently expand the apparatus space, you need to modern standard, would it be a book there?
Yes, you you know, we we've talked about them being at least sixty feet long. I mean, I mean, at one point, one version, and I don't know if it was this site or an alternate site. Uh, had days sixty, sixty or space and. To to move around and circulate around is better, but sixty feet is way better than what we have now, but. What we're really lacking now is width between the base and height.
And that will dramatically improve.
Yes.
So that that will also allow for larger firefighting. The space for equipment maintenance and preparedness activities, that is better than all of these, I think.
Yes, because currently right now, we to to get to the engine, the the motor, um. Low fire apparatus, you have to tilt the cab, you can't do that currently inside our station. These station designs will have the clearance to be able to to tilt that inside, so in case of weather, we can still get. To the end, to the motor, to check the oil or fill the oil. You know, do do an assessment, or or work on the vehicle right now, even in the dead winter. When when we call repair tech, they have to pull the truck outside, they do leave that to our.
So if we were starting from option four. Is that the one there that you're interested in? What they're interested in my client?
Are you on page six?
I'm on page six, though, no.
I think that there's. And and they said they're returning six pages on Main Street for the two stories, aligning the budget, yeah. I'm seductive over there. I'm trying to get the more concrete way, I'm too bad for the day up front, up up top. For two future ones down below.
Five of that.
Five up top, two below, or two plus the extra space, which is really almost three, but. You know, you that could be trained in the field, frankly, temporarily, it's got a concrete floor and, you know, there's ways to do it, you know.
So then I guess just one last question, um, the options for the, and the options reviewed on page twenty. I guess if you had to pick, if we started with that, we're opting for with that base, which has a a baseline. Which of these options is most compelling to you or? I mean, I get that it's a deep, it's a hard also cost, what best? And durability to serve as the main station for the A F D, if any.
I I feel that it would be extremely short sighted to build anything. At that location that didn't capture. Space in the basement. In whatever raw capacity is possible. That allows us the flexibility to expand into that space in the future, so if. Uh, from a budget perspective, reducing to five. On the the top level gets us two plus. Spaces down below, I think that that is certainly. Better than six up top that has no basement.
So then is your, yeah, I guess is there any other primaries that you have, uh, the options aside from potential future sustainability or?
I mean. Given this site and the the numerous iterations that we have discussed and reviewed, I think that this. Comes as close as we can, um, with the limitations that we do have. To meeting as as many of the rules as as we have, so.
Thank you, and I do, I I'm on.
I move to ask partners in architecture to focus their design and continuing the design on the five bay on main. Two bay on park, two story building, uh, with, uh. And, uh, public, uh, lobby on park. An elevator and the stairs. Is that, or, uh, that, sorry, instead of elevator stairs, is a problem. With a cost and feasibility study of moving sheriff to the city hall.
And what would I all day? It's done, what?
I just say that I would like, I mean, I like most of that motion, but I if. I made it, I would send you the share here or elsewhere. Like, look at other options we may have that are not here and are not at the fire station locations. Okay, I mean, side issue, I I mean.
I can still do that in addition to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that flexible is open.
Is that nothing, um?
Yeah.
Could we read it faster?
Yes, um, to focus on the five bay on Main Street, two bay on Park. The two, at at a two story building with the garage on the park level, the elevator and the lobby on the park level. Um, and then also a cost and feasibility study, including the sheriff to City Hall or elsewhere.
That's on right, that's on right, that's up.
Yeah, I I instead of garage, um, the raw space.
Okay.
And, um, instead of elevator at lobby to add vertical circulation. So we want the the lobby at park, but instead of elevator at park to have vertical circulation.
But you you mean the whole space?
So the.
The they would bench there and earlier.
Yes, and the bathrooms and all of that at the park level, and then the vertical circulation.
Which is for the elevator portion, so three and four.
Three and four.
So this was the dream, my take of this is the dream room, I think it's not the ultimate purpose training room over the. One, three and four on, on page point eight. The translation of that, we continue with the designs, including one, three and four. That's the favorite, comes from that.
In the committee, um. We talked about this also with if the sheriff were to move to heat or another alternative location. Mr. Gadsden mentioned that it could be efficiencies in design of the building. Because of the way it's set up on the two floors, that potentially can be less than, so there could potentially be a. As a. Development of going forward in design, it could end up optimizing that building with the with the spaces there. Um, it could provide, you know, towards for, have the sheriff somewhere else. It, um, could provide an offset for some of the other options, so it's really asking for. Approval of the base design and looking at the, also working on those other options to be able to develop.
So if we if we move this direction tonight, does that mean we'll see a formal design proposal at the next meeting? Do we set up, put that together right back?
What do you mean design?
Well, what's what's the next step in terms of your design, what do you what do you call phase two, when we get out of phase one, David? What do you call that? Where where we approve you.
That that part will begin when we all agree that this is the plan, whatever that plan turns out. And so, um, what I was listening to and trying to think about what my next steps are is. Um, it's a little bit in the fork in the road, if I. Look at the Main Street site with sheriff somewhere else. To Joe's point, I'm gonna be able to, in geometry, really create much better efficiency. In this plan, fire only, than that very linear north to south, south. Comprises, fire, sheriff and both levels, I can make them more square. Because the square footage is less, so I'm gonna be creating a new concept plan to come back to you and say. Based on what you guys are talking about, here's a good plan for five days on Main Street. Sheriff, not sheriff, but fire administration and crew board or living area on Main Street now. Um, I can't really say, I wouldn't wouldn't be doing you a benefit to take this plan and take sheriff out and just leave him. I can create a much better footprint and better budget result if I, in the committee, work on. A new scheme.
So that's, so that's. That's fair, that's a fair comment, but. We don't have to figure out where sheriff's gonna go, so my my opinion is that you should design the building with sheriff there. And then we have this, because that's. And then we have this, because that's the longer lead item. And then we can figure out if we want to move. Move the sheriff and then you can redo the space.
Okay, that's that's slightly my opinion, that's the direction, but if we, we we will do that. And then if sheriff moves. Then we're back to somewhat the starting point again to create the efficiency in the plan if sheriff not there. Um, it's almost, do we take two paths? Do we want with sheriff, well, without the sheriff? Um, or do we? Follow ahead with sheriff there and then shift gears if we need to.
I'm confident that in two weeks we can come back with a concept plan and show you sheriff not there.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I'm confident of that. Okay, but that doesn't solve the problems. We don't know where to put the sheriff. It's just it's just a blind to say that we're jumping to that. I'd rather just have you have the space and it be unfinished. From the second floor. Until we figure out the sheriff, but know that it has to be the sheriff until we have a different plan.
Okay.
That's my own personal opinion.
In in that pursuit, can I not make a. Provisions for multi-purpose space? Because that's another big chunk of square footage. If I don't have to account for it, I can create some efficiencies. Right now it's a roof, right? In our current scheme, if we include it, it's footprint, footprint the same. If if you can tell me it's never going to be there, then I can create a better efficiency first or second floor. I don't know, it's, you can't answer the question really because it's.
The motion that was made was not to do the the multi-purpose space. It didn't it didn't include two.
All right, and then I'll take that.
You can make a fridge and doll the rest of the space. Just make that dream.
Well, in two weeks I can have a plan that conceptualizes what you talked about tonight.
Yeah, yeah, don't.
Michelle. I I think that that would.
Michelle, do you have a question?
I'm thinking about how this is going to happen eventually in the way of planning. Is there a way that, um. You're able to start work on the site plan? Um, in one chamber, you know, are technical?
I would very much like to get a proposal, that's all that going forward. Yeah, that's what I get to.
Okay.
And when you say proposal, Ms. Mayor, you mean like a task list, here's what we're doing, one, two, three, four, five? Or you mean proposal, like here's the plan?
When's the next set of dollars we have to boot in, in your mind? Or is it free for Karen?
It's been free for quite a while.
I was trying to get to the point where you were moving towards something that was going to become a bid now.
I know, and we're not there yet. And that that really is part two. We're, to me, we're still exploring really good.
What 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 time period does part two come? What is the major decision that needs to be made to get to part two?
We need to know what we're doing. What is the concept plan that we're going to then document? Right now, we're still exploring good ideas.
But, okay, the the motion I thought was that we were taking the concept plan that's on page. Page.
You know, I take that back. You're right. I mean, you 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 nailed it down. And I just need to work with this plan to incorporate those add-ons.
Okay.
And that will be what I do. Good.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I just. Yeah, not say that, as I was reading the memo. I just can't really. This problem was artificially constrained prematurely. Everybody knows that. I have I have to say it. Um, I mean, we're specifically calling out constraints due to space and parking. And then talking about things like, well, in the fire station on top of the parking structure, parking on the roof of it, stacking the building, I mean. When I read this, I thought, what? Anyway, for my own sake, for members of the public that I know, I'm also perplexed by this direction. And then all these ways we talked about shifting money, we don't use words that do that shifting money, I guess, around. I just cannot believe this is really the best option. Yes, given the constraint. But that constraint is artificial, not real.
Dan, my 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 take of all this is they've given us their best guess, the cost of so much stuff. In order to confirm that, they're going to have to actually bid something. It would be much more detailed than the concept plan. Okay, it's at that time that we'll know the actual cost of this and the actual cost of some of those. Add-ons or not. And then we're going to have to have a decision to decide. Do we allocate additional reserve funds to cover those other items that we want to accomplish, that we went through on the list?
I understand.
There's a gap, there's a time gap between now and when the actual bid numbers come back. But we can never get to that part in time if we don't start moving the design. To that point, and that's what I'm trying to suggest we start doing.
That's fine. I'm just letting people know why I.
Understood.
Cannot. I support moving in this direction because it doesn't make any sense.
Understood. Go.
I I could, we definitely disagree with Jonathan Griffin. There are a lot of costs that are on this site. That are being, that would have had to have been addressed regardless of what happened there. In all the studies that I remember seeing between the proposed Meadow View site and the downtown site. Never was five hundred thousand dollars plus included for the cost of law. Never was the lost tax revenues from the last four years or five years included. Believe we have some kind of detention that were costs that we had with that site, that wasn't included. Never was. Mitigation of the existing site included. Never was their discussion of how we were going to pay for an elevator or the other things that would essentially go on that site. Didn't provide access to the park that's being completed here. It's easy to point to those added on things like the elevator and say. Well, that's a cost that we're pulling up in parks. Yeah, it's it's not the fire station. And, you know, frankly. Should be. Taken away, the budget shouldn't be taken away from so that we can do the elevator. We should have the budget from parks or from somewhere else. One thing that we found that's been eminently clear when we gone through. We have looked at a lot of this. We have looked at and asked a lot of questions, a lot out of the box. And the reason those were asked was because we were trying to find a way to best utilize the dollars that we have. And. The thing that became very clear is. You can slice it and dice it and put it any way you want it. You're going to get X amount of square feet for X amount of dollars. And even the raw space, that raw space that will be down below is almost four hundred dollars a square foot. The whole building is going to be coming out to four hundred and sixty eight dollars a square foot. So we're saying raw space, just raw space. It's eighty percent of the cost of what the entire, of the square footage in the entire buildings. We're we're not, it's not like there's a miracle occurs when you go to a different site and all of a sudden it's only three hundred dollars a square foot. And we can build a half again as big station. It doesn't happen. It's eight point five million dollars. We got nine point three or whatever in the budget. We can build X amount of square feet. That's what we're building here. There isn't any shortchanging because this site. There could have been more parking there, yes, because it was a bigger spot, it was an open. Other than that, there isn't any. And. We're talking about adding parking to the park, we're talking about adding parking to the site, we're talking about improving it overall. Again. Everyone is dismissing, nobody talks about all the costs that would have been involved at that site, having not gone through. And. It's important, it it's a cost that the city would have incurred had we not. Built the fire station where it is currently now. And I understand there's a, I think this comes down to a difference of opinion on the location. And it doesn't do us any good to go through and try and make it sound like it was a poor choice for a number of other reasons. It literally comes down to whether or not which location you think are better. That's just what it comes down to. And I'm willing to have that discussion with anybody, and I have had that discussion with people. There there is no way to take this money that we have and make it into something bigger. There is no way. That the picture that was on the sign at Meadow View could have been built with the bond money, with the nine point three million dollars that we covered up. Could not have been done. And that was why, when we had the village, that was why we were saying, oh, we'll make it twelve, make it three million. Because that's what we needed to build that building.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. File that certainly by semi thorough. We can see the direction, direction of the base design and proposal. Looking further at one, three and four.
Flap?
Yeah.
Griffin? No. Semi Farah?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Cover? Yes. All Day? Yes. Here.
Yes. Motion period, sorry. You've been at this three hour, everybody want to keep going or done it here? I mean, if they want to be stretching, I think that's going to be short. But maybe I need just. Go on, just set it by her. Yes.
I do find it a pain a little that I brought. Maybe if you're concerned today, if you're staying within the package, consider it's a supplement considering. Everybody's talked about that later. That's, can I make a motion that we postpone that until the next meeting? Item M five. I know that's out of order, but.
Do that.
And F four, why don't I go for it? Let's postpone F four and five. The next meeting.
Is there a second for that? I'll say. I feel that it would make our innovation here all that, but. Okay. Oh, and yeah, that's fine.
I just say the only, um, thing I wanted to say about the transportation asset management plan is something that came up recently on Hardison. Boy, they mentioned it earlier, because I was going to mention it here, is we just talked about the ADA audit. And along with that, addressed parking and facilities from parking areas. And so I just wanted to. One thing, one idea Hardison had was, well, as we're talking about future order proof, let's see if we can hold in some of these ADA parking issues. I don't know if that is at all on your radar. So I'll forget next time.
Put that into the, that's not a comparison. I enjoyed this couple of notes and postponed it. Some four and five.
Griffin? Yeah. Flap?
Yeah.
Michelle's?
Yeah.
Semi Farah?
Yes.
Cover? Yes. All Day? Yeah. Here.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. We're down to a final debate, which is not random participation.
That's very interesting. You had a couple of comments that came from these that all was just saying. They're not saying, John, I I understand why, but they're so important. And in particular. Is the entrance treatment to the drive that goes down to the park. It's fine, and how you how that's handled. So at some point in time. That park down there, right? Now, you don't know it's there unless you live here. So at some point in time, that needs to be addressed. And I don't know how, can be done, uh, quite nicely. Number two, um. I think the public restrooms are really, really important. And might want to be separated from. The elevator and the stairs. So if they're put in. An alternative, the restroom might want to be in the face. Because everybody is wanting public restroom down there. That's a perfect time to go down. That's all. Thank you.
We're listening to that. Anyone online? Oh, go down, please, Margaret.
Um, I do appreciate getting postponed or have more time before our teaching. Offense committee, I would ask, since you have, you've had it in your packet, you have extra time to do the package. Have you had any specific questions? If you could get those to Justin, advance so that I can prepare for the answers. Um, because we do want to get a final decision sooner than later so that we can start getting a bit of action together if it's pricing. Look, if you have any advanced questions, get those to Sam, that'd be great.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, I think we're around to announce the comments. Uh, John, or Karen, mine?
Um, I don't think I have any.
Um, I'll I'll start with with comments on on the road stuff, just so, whatever. Um, I think we are significantly underfunding preventative treatment. And I say that because when I look at the chart on page two, two, two of the packet. Uh, our roads, our pazer rating are worse than what they were in twenty twenty one. Um, twenty twenty and twenty eighteen. Uh, by way of example. Uh, I live on Dover. It was crushed and shaved and and repaved ten years ago, I believe it was. It's been cracked sealed once. My understanding is that that's something that ought to be every two years for for maintenance. And there are significant cracks, I know because I walk on it, um, to get stuff. So I would be in favor of significant investment in preventative maintenance. I know it's sexy to go for the large projects because we get the big matches and that looks good, but if you look here, our our pazer is falling behind. Um, and if it means we wait one year so we can, I would be very happy with that. Let's see. So one of the things that they teach us at liberal old church is the ability to have multiple or many thoughts that are competing. To that end, I offer that it's possible to not like something that one believes is a dumpster fire, but still try to get it to be less of a dumpster fire. But I will save my comments and questions to the one entitled process. Um, after today. I I am looking forward to the ability to to question the motivation of others. That could be fun. And I will try to be more mindful of my verbs, uh, but sometimes I do use it to try to engage in. I can get again and get close to thinking about stuff. That is all. Thank you.
Dan?
I am concerned about repeated efforts to silence for cynical voice that is capable. The solution to speak you don't like is not censorship. The solution is more speech. We are at these meetings to discuss and debate, not to play rubber stamp for you to determine decision.
We're invited to this sitting at this table. Has been elected. By the constituents of this city. And we are all having the conversation with the residents around. To make sure that their voices are here. Thoughts are here. And if we are throwing words around. That is, or action that in another context would have been totally acceptable by the people that use those words. Is basically directly. Attacking the character of those who are sitting at the table. And also the people they are representing at this table. Let's be more mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, complaining. Fair, are there any proposed agenda for future meetings other than the chapter two we postponed?
With the annexation, um. Request that's been made. Um. Based on the feedback from Zeta Township, um. It it's potential that the annexation might not have. My biggest concern in that occurring could be access to the annexed park. My biggest concern in that occurring could be access to the annexed car field, uh, from the. From Dexter Crossing, uh, we talked before about dedicating the right of way that's currently in Mainwood Park as making it as part, currently as part of our project. Identifying this part, um, I'd like to know if there's a different process for what we would have to do as a council. To make those stops in Upper Wellington or. Whatever, I think it's one of them, in Dexter Crossing into, uh, neighborhood parks in the route that we're with us there. If, if that annexation doesn't happen, if we don't proceed with that. I, I don't think we're going to allow that, since that's actually that, through Dexter Crossing, uh, that's something again, but. Something I'd like to know if you can, then good luck to council to consider it, you know, develop another discussion.
So.
Another agenda item, um. That I think generally this table and the whole should discuss is the, um, if we are thinking of another location for the sheriff's office. Um, other than. Um, combined with the fire station would be something. My mind, it might be discussed at this table.
Okay, thank you, I will send the other for a German. At, what time do you have? I don't know.
So.
Move by all day? All right, seven, five o'clock, all the voters, everybody say. Hi, hi. Both? Happy fall, everybody.